We support, a good example you'll recognize is we produce the bottle for the Stonyfield Smoothie Yogurt.
Oh.
So, we are constantly in concert with Stonyfield. We also produce bottles for Hood. We're basically a dairy and food service container manufacturer. Our processes are extrusion blow molding, which is, any milk bottle you see out on the shelf is what we can produce. We've been in business in Manchester.
You don't make these then?
We don't make those. We make those in our New York facility. People have asked us to make those here, but we are not yet. That's a different, that is a different process and different materials. Everything we do is FDA food grade.
Okay, Andre?
Yeah, I just wanna echo a bit about the Shelburne Plastic. We're very pleased that Shelburne Plastic has chosen this location to move their facility. We've been working off and on with them over the last year. And another site in the airport area. And that fell through, but just wanna truly appreciate the Shelburne Plastic sticking with us and as a place to open up their business and selecting this DHL business, which has basically been quite vacant for the better part of the last five or six years. So, it just converts this facility from a distribution business to a manufacturing distribution business, which in looking at the numbers actually decreased the use of the site, but obviously increased the productive and valuable use of the site. So, one, we were very happy that Shelburne selected them one there and hoping we could include them and get them in there and getting operational.
Okay, more to make questions or?
Quick question. Are you expanding an existing operation or are you just moving your existing operation?
Currently, we're at 1050 Perimeter Road. And while we could stay there, the building itself is not as conducive to manufacturing. There is some expansion going on with Stonyfield and we're increasing our output to support their needs. This is a better home. The buildings are better, the buildings are much better layout. It's, I mean, if you look at it from a manufacturing standpoint, I guess you'd have to see our facility, but we're in a smaller facility. It's chopped up. It started, you know, it's like here's the first machine and then all of a sudden it grew to six machines. We've laid the building out to support as many as eight to 10 machines. We're currently going to relocate seven, six to seven with our current business base. So, we do look to grow a little bit, but everything that was given in numbers has taken that into consideration. As Tim said, you know, the actual traffic is gonna be quite a bit less.
Good. Well, good luck there. I wish you good luck.
Appreciate that.
I'm also.
Okay, any more questions or is everyone coupled with a staff handling this as a minor site plan?
Yes.
Yep.
I think that's what the.
Parts. The first is allowing this change of use to happen now without any site changes so they can start the work to the building inside itself. And then the second phase will be a minor site plan that would've been done anyway to do the minor site changes for some parking and some other changes to the actual site itself. But that will be done separately. We need basically the authorization to allow the change of use to be approved administratively.
Okay, I'll probably need a motion for the change of use.
Okay, and the change of use, you said it has no traffic impact.
It would be a lesser traffic impact.
Right, and it's conducive to what's up there anyway, so I'll make the motion.
Within the district.
Yep, I'll make the motion then that we allow for the change of use.
I'll second.
I have a motion and I have a second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sign on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Opinions, share with affirmative and you have the change of use and just.
Thank you very much.
We're closely with staff because they're very good.
Yeah, we'll be working with them and we'll probably, you know, we'll be, I don't know, about a month we'll be back probably with the minor site changes.
Yep, and then we'll eventually have to sign off on it ourselves, so.
Right, so we're working closely with the engineers. Stay within the lines.
Well, welcome to Londonderry.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next item is Market Basket Illumination Plan revisions.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your packet you'll find plans from Market Basket. They have made another slight modification to their illumination plan. There, John can actually probably explain a little bit better exactly what they're proposing to do here.
Basically, what they're proposing is some additional lighting along the, beneath the canopy of the new Market Basket. And there's 10 poles that they're adding along the edge of the curbing with some, again, 24 wall mounted lights and a good 20 lights beneath the canopy itself. So, we've asked them to just verify again there's no impact to the lighting levels at the property line and they've provided us backup on that. So, again, the question for the board is whether or not you would like a public hearing on this or want staff to handle it administratively.
This is probably more technical than.
And we've gone through the plans. We did make some changes. There was some uplighting in their original proposal that has now been eliminated. So, as far as compliance with the regulations, they are complying with regulations.
Let's see if handle it.
Yep.
All the confidence in you?
Yep.
They got nothing to do.
Keep them busy. See if we can work them harder.
Have they given you any indication when they'll be done, ready to open?
No, they have not.
Okay, next we have the approval and signing of the minutes of December 1st and December 8th, 2010.
Done.
Oh, we have to make the motion and approve it even if you've signed them.
Oh, okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the, we can take both minutes, can we? Or are we, is everybody here for both?
Uh, I think Lisa's probably the only one that wasn't, so we can just abstain, so.
So, make the motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Mary, second by Lynn for the minutes approval. Any discussion by the board? Sign on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Opinions, show us affirmative and the minutes of December 1st and 8th are approved and they are signed. Can you give them there Chuck?
No, I gave them to.
Okay, Kathy has them.
Right.
One thing I wanna note also, this is Kathy's last meeting. It's kind of, we're gonna miss you. But she's off onto a much, much better application, so congratulations and good luck. And Libby is going to be the replacement.
Starting next week.
Starting next, yes, next week already. Three meetings in a row. But all month off though, but congratulations on the career advancement and good luck. Next item is regional impact determinations and Tim has the info on this.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your packet find a memo. We have one project tonight for a regional impact determination. It's a proposed five lot subdivision from Tammy and Verani 2004 Revocable Trust. Staff recommendation is that the project is not a development of regional impact because it does not meet any of the guidelines for the regional foundation.
Okay, I'll take a motion that, I guess we've got Tax Map 17, Lot 34, Tammy and Verani, Revocable Trust. Design review, a five lot subdivision is not of regional impact.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mary, second by Lynn.
Second by me.
Any discussion by the board?
Just one question. Where is this?
This is corner of Page Road and Lucas Road up by the Manchester City Line.
Okay, I know exactly where it's at, yep.
Up in the north woods.
Up in the woods.
This is the gravel portion of the plaza.
Okay, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Opinions, show us affirmative and the five lot subdivision of Tammy and Verani is not of regional impact. Okay, we go to discussions of town staff and I'll start with Andre. And you're just back from the metro meeting.
Yes, yes, I'm just giving the board this a quick update. I attended the Metro Center Leadership Forum, which I believe. They actually have that annually for the last several years. I don't know why this is. They've had this meeting annually for the last several years.
The architect and the construction administrator of the project. So we can now start getting building renderings and more details of the actual building. Started the design review process with Tim and the staff. So we'll start getting into a lot of the actual design details. The first design of the front landscape park area has been completed. Really helps to buffer the whole front entrance along the twenty-eight. So this will allow us to start the process with the heritage mission. We want until we have those architectural renderings and landscaping done before we take that step.
Yes.
So we're moving along on all of those fronts. I can quickly go through the presentation we did last time.
Yeah, 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 just in case someone, someone knew here anyway, so.
I have many copies of the handouts we had last time. If the board would like a copy.
Yeah, we got the electronic version of it, so. If anyone from the public wants some paper, we can, we can make it available anyway.
Going through the presentation, we showed the existing warehouse. There are two freezer warehouses in town, both operated and run by Ed Doherty. One is the Londonderry Freezer Warehouse, which is the one you see behind you. That's on Route twenty-eight, just west of the highway. We also come in and gotten approved and built Highwood Coal Storage, which is also on Route twenty-eight, around the far end, right on the dairy line. The original construction of the first Londonderry Freezer Warehouse was about nineteen ninety-eight, with an addition in two thousand. He then went and built the original Highwood Coal Storage in two thousand and two, with an addition in two thousand and five. All of those properties are completely maximized to the process they can on their existing lots. Both are on Route twenty-eight. It's a good chance most of the people in town don't even know about them. They're very quiet uses, warehouse uses. With these also maybe corporate citizen. This second slide shows you the conceptual plan of what we showed for the eighty-two thousand square foot addition. Seventy-seven thousand of that will be freezer warehouse. High bay, ten below zero, give or take freezer warehouse space. There'll be a two-story office building on the front, five thousand square foot, four per, ten thousand square feet total. He's moving six people, his office staff, from the Highwood Coal Storage location to this. I think it's going to be a very attractive building, a brick front. I think it's going to be a very nice office building and a very nice entrance to this project. The, going back one slide. I know, I'm rushing. Is a very few changes to the site. We're going to slightly enhance the radius leaving the site. The trucks right now tend to go up on the property to, um, take that right-hand turn. So we're going to widen that a little bit. There's no wetland impacts with this. We're going to handle our drainage in our park area in the front and over to behind the building. We're going to use some bio retention areas and all the latest technology and green designs we can to improve the drainage. Okay? Traffic? We anticipate five additional warehouse employees. And the six additional office employees that are relocated from Highwood Coal Storage. No attrition, no additional truck docks. The incoming traffic has all been scheduled in the past, so he knows, just wanted to show him that. It used to be that all outgoing traffic when people come to pick up goods to bring it to a store. For those of you who are not familiar with it, a lot of his freezer space is food product. It's grown in South America, Southeast Asia. Shrimp, seafood, every other type of product that goes out frozen. Quite often it comes in during the production season in those countries. Gets trucked in and left here. Six, nine, eighteen months, some of it's very long-term storage. Then the trucks will come in from all the different stores and distribution facilities to pick up and leave. In the past, he allowed them, I believe, to show up when they wanted to. Ninety-five percent of the route traffic was between eight AM and five. Few people get here, a little party, and sometimes the truck would truck late due to traffic. But the majority is between eight and five. So its warehouse space goes, there's not a lot of turnover. It's not in one day and out the next. A lot of this comes in and stays in the warehouse for many, many months. Going to the next slide. We have about a three hundred and sixty-foot front setback from twenty-eight. It's asked us to provide a landscaped park area. There's one major tree up near the road that we're going to save. We were going to save that. The rest of it, we're going to burn it up, six, eight, ten feet high in spots and landscape it on top of. So except for a very brief look as you're looking down the driveway, the building will be invisible through twenty-eight. It's going to be a significant landscape area.
Is this a walk right here, or is that a drive?
It's a walkway. It'll just be mulched.
Right.
People really, like, three feet wide, two feet wide, just around the area.
Meditation space when they come out of the warehouse.
And is the driveway here?
Drive is the top.
At the bottom of it?
The top.
The top?
That's the top one.
Oh, okay.
Physical fitness for the employees.
Warm up in the summer. Talking a little about the changes between the two zones, since that's why we're really here. As you can see, the front setbacks are sixty foot and thirty feet in the two zones, or three hundred and sixty feet. We're going to adhere to all side setbacks. We're going to be an increase in those. Residential buffers, we made completely. Minimum green space, we greatly exceed the minimum green space for the site. The only problem we have with the current zone, the commercial zone, anticipated smaller buildings, but much bigger parking areas. They have twenty-five percent building coverage. That does not exist at all in the industrial zone. It would be at thirty-one percent of the site for our building. But will greatly exceed the minimum green space requirement. So I believe our site, in many ways, is per the book, a industrial use. It's a warehouse use, it always has been, and due to the special type of construction needed for this, it's going to remain that type of use. This is a quick zoning map. Site just blew in there. Everything in purple is other industrial zones up in that area. You can see it's, that whole area has industrial scattered around it. We feel that we fit in nicely. On the next sheet, we zoom in a little bit. We show you our site, which is currently two lots. We agree with the staff recommendation that we would merge those as a condition of any zoning change and site plan approval. To our west, there's a hill formation along a narrow lot, which helps to buffer the site. To our south, so there's some prime woodlands that will never be developed. The conservation land is much of the land to our east. And then we're doing a tremendous amount of landscaping to the front. Very isolated site with a very quiet use. So I think it, it fits in very nicely there. I know that was brief compared to December, but I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Anything, John?
No.
Okay, Tim?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Jim. And as Ed mentioned, this was presented back on December eighth to the planning board conceptually. As he mentioned, they're looking to expand the facility on these lots once they combine it to a single parcel. The board was very supportive back in December, so they've moved forward with this proposal. The current parcel is C-two and Route twenty-eight P O D. And while the warehouse use is allowed in that C-two district, the expansion under the current zoning is, as Bob had mentioned, is problematic due to the lot covered requirement in the commercial districts, but which would not apply in the industrial district. And while it is possible for the applicant to request a variance for the lot covered requirement, it's always staff's recommendation that the applicant pursue administrative remedies prior to resorting to requesting a variance. The warehouse use is much more compatible with the industrial district, and the use is well-established in this location. As again Bob mentioned, it was originally constructed in nineteen ninety-eight. There exists other industrial zone parcels in this area of Londonderry. The conversion from the warehouse to other uses would be very difficult for this parcel, given the configuration and specific characteristics of the freezer warehouse business. And for all of these reasons, as well as the use not being contract, contrary to the master plan, we are supportive of the request. So our staff recommendation is that because it's consistent with the master plan, this parcel or area was not specifically called out. The existing proposed use is more in line with the industrial district than the commercial district. There are other industrial zone parcels in the vicinity of the proposed resorting, and was supported conceptual by the planning board in December. And as such, staff is recommending that the planning board recommend this rezoning from split zone C-two P O D to I-one to the town council with the following conditions. That being one, that the planning board approve a voluntary merger or law consolidation of the two parcels. And secondly, that the planning board approve the site plan for the expansion of the facility, reasonably consistent with that was presented conceptually to the board back in December.
Okay, anything to add, Andre?
The only thing I would add is that, one, I know on this particular site, there were many options ahead of the owner, Ed Doherty. He had, again, built the Londonderry Freezer Warehouse and then the Highwood Coal Storage Facility. Both of those, both of those lots total well over two hundred thousand square feet. With the addition that they're looking to put on here, will bring it up to three hundred thousand square feet in Londonderry with the combined total of the two facilities. The uniqueness of this particular program is that I know that the owner had options outside of Londonderry to build this facility. We definitely appreciate of him coming back to Londonderry and is adding on to an existing facility and expanding here in Londonderry. So it definitely is a plus on the economic development side, and hope that this will come to fruition.
Yes, yes. Any questions or things from the comments from the board? Lynn?
Are there any concerns with this being considered spot zoning, since it's?
No, the reason being is because there's still other industrial zone air parcels within reasonable proximity of this, plus the fact that the existing use is already an industrial use in nature. We would not be spot zoning this specific for a new use on this property. So I believe it's supportable that this would not be a spot zoning.
Anything else from the board?
Yeah, are there other residences besides the one that's to the west of it? That is the daycare? Are there any other residences nearby?
See the picture behind you on the screen on your screen?
To the west.
Oh, yeah. See right in front of the screen, there's some residences on Mammoth Road.
Right, they're on Mammoth Road, but I mean along Rockingham Road.
Across the street.
On the same side of the street? Is there anything next to them, up here?
If, if they are, they're existing residential uses in a commercial district that will likely be redeveloped at some point in the future.
Come down the corner, I think it's Harold Square and the.
Right, that's on the opposite side though.
It's across the street.
Mrs. Q Sacks is overnight.
So really, the only thing that is there, and I know you're doing a fabulous job about screening it from the, from the daycare that's there, that, it's a home daycare situation, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring that up, that you're doing a fabulous job. I know you are, you talked about putting some fencing up to additionally buffer it, but also if the park's on the other side, the road's just there, and there's still all those trees as well. So it's terrific.
It is a corporate citizen and it's reading room to spend money to do.
Yep, they are, they are.
We certainly appreciate that.
Um, you will be taking down the house, right?
Yes.
Okay, and filling the swimming pool and all that.
Everything will be, right, we have it down in the plan. Everything except the one large tree out front will come down.
Okay. And Mary, that daycare is on a commercial lot also.
Okay.
Anything else from the board? Are there any butters or anyone from the public that has any questions or comments or concerns about this rezoning? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the board. If there's no further questions, I'll take a motion that we recommend to the town council, the rezoning of tax map fifteen lots twenty-two and one twenty-four from commercial to performance overlay district to industrial one, with the conditions that Tim has stipulated.
Per the staff recommendation.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, second by Mary, second by Lynn.
You're making it so easy, aren't you?
Yeah, my motion makers aren't, are here, but.
But you're, you're right, falling right, right behind us.
Priming things a little bit. Any discussion by the board? Seeing that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Since the chair was affirmative, and the recommendation will go to the town council. They'll have a first reading on it, and then a second reading at which they'll have a public hearing on it also, so.
As soon as I know the schedule, I will.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you very much also.
Good luck.
Mr. Chairman, just interrupt for a second. I got a message from my wife. They're having, she's having a lot of trouble hearing the audio over the.
Oh, really?
Over the television, so I don't know if there's anything we can do to check that.
I think you just made the adjustment, because you can hear now.
Okay.
The volume went up.
Okay, it's not us talking softly then, or whispering.
We'll find out.
Well, Andre always speaks softly, so. Yes, you do, you need to bring that microphone closer to you, buddy.
That's good, that's how your wife keeps tracking you, Lynn.
No, you gotta bring it closer. He's turning it up because you bring it so far away from you.
That on his bicycle.
Okay, next, I can, I can hear myself here too. Guess something's working anyway. Next item is our conceptual discussion, it's a workshop. Woodmont Commons Performance Unit Development, uh, oh, planned. I'm on the P O Ds. Planned unit development, master plan discussion. We've got Rick Schellman here and John Michaels. We've had two public discussions on this that haven't traveled too far, as far as getting information, but also a dialogue between us, the developer, and the, and the public. And what I've been trying to grasp at, and I've had various discussions, and how to really get this into more of an informal situation, so we can have an exchange of ideas. I also want to thank Jack Felvey very much, because he's provided, and, and other people who've been involved in providing questions, that Jack has funneled into us. It, it covers quite a wide area, all, all those questions. They're, they're, they're good questions. They will be answered. Some of, I think of probably the bulk of them, we don't have the answers yet. We need the information. So what I've been doing is seeking how we can get that information, and as we get that information, have, have dialogues. And then the electronic versions, even up here, I find very hard to see. And I tend to like, I'm still in the roadmap business, you know, instead of navigating nav systems. So I like to have something I can, I can look at, something I can see details of and everything. But I'll, I'll turn the floor over to John and Rick.
Um, Mr. Kettinback couldn't be here today, but he's been to the other meetings, and he will continue to be to meetings, but he just couldn't make it today. But we, you know, we go along with sort of what art is. We, I think, from the developer point of view, we need input from, from the board for certain things in sort of a certain order. Because you can't say what's going to happen with the road or reservoir until you know what things you can do. You, you, so what, what we propose is that, say, for the next three meetings, we, we take, and I've given Tim an outline, I have something for you, that we take the submission list, we divide it into three parts, and we work our way through. We have submitted already a large number of items, but as.
So this is the, this is the list right from our, the planning and development ordinance?
Yeah, in fact, with your. The, um, we take the submission list, there's certain things that have to come first. You know, we have to know what sort of use is, because everything ties into what use is. You know, we have to sort of have an agreement that this is sort of the way a plan will look. And so what, um, what we're recommending is that we take groups of these items, and at, at a meeting, we go through them. You know, the chairman goes through the items, you know, okay, we take, you know, two point eight, point nine, point two. And we've submitted a bunch of this stuff, but we've already, you know, we will, what we'd like to do is get your input. You say, well, the narrative should be more, it should be less, it should be something different. We like it, okay? We can go on. Our proposed land plan, you know, we have, we have big plans. One of the problems, as, as Arthur mentioned, is that they're hard for anybody to see. You know, I sit in the audience, I happen to know the plan, but I can't see it up there. I mean, my vision leaves a little something. So one of the things I thought of is, when we come to these meetings, for the, the benefit of everybody, we'll take some of these things and blow them up and put them on big sheets that the board can see and everybody, you know, and you can see them much better. But what I propose is that we go through these items at a meeting. For example, one thing's total acreage of the tract, rough delineation of each land use. So we'll come up with the tract, we'll say, these are the rough uses. But earlier you've said, these are the uses we can do. And, you know, and once we get that, then we can go to the next meeting and do things like general estimates of location size of structures. We can work our way in a logical fashion through the items. And then on the, say, a, a third gathering, it's, you know, what sort of an organization will you have for some of these, you know, sample documents and the rest? Well, unless you really know what we're allowed to do, we don't really know what documents you want. And you can't go and say, you know, what parking you have unless you know what items you have. So what I, what I would propose is that we take, you know, and I, I just took it in three chunks that seem to make some sense from a, you know. Give the stuff to you and go forward. Now, one of the other things which we, which we will do is, um, there are a lot of people that have questions. And the, the questions depend on what the plan is. And it, it depends on where we are on the process. And so, you know, Jack Felvey has come and put together a lot of questions which, you know, which I've gotten, you know, through the planning board and all. And then when we go through, if we're addressing one of the, these items that addresses some of the questions, then we go and answer the question in the context of what we have before us. But to go and say, you know, what we're going to do with streets when we don't know what our development is yet, you know, so I, I think we just, we'll go to answer the questions. The other thing which I, which we'll do, and it makes sense, we, we finally have our offices, the Leavens have moved out of the offices, and so we have space that isn't freezing and a big open storage place. So we now have a space that we can go and.
This is where the charrettes were held?
Well, not where the.
Same building.
Same building, but in the front. Nobody went in, but there's an office there. And there's, there are places where there are walls where we can put big plans up. We can put information in. What, what we're going to do is on Thursday nights between seven and nine, Saturday mornings between nine and eleven, starting next week, we'll go and have an open informational house. If you want to come in and you want to go and look at the plans, or you want to see the back, or you want to see something else, it'll be there. You want to talk to Rick or I or, or Mike, you know, one or more of us will be, will be there. But I find, you know, the people come up to me and say, you know, I can't follow this stuff. You know, I can't read it on the, the net, I can't download it, so I, I can't understand what it is.
Yeah, I think it's been frustrating for us as a planning board to try to find a handle on this, where to, where to really look at it. And, you know, maybe, maybe this will work, you know. The way I look at it is, maybe the best thing is to break it down into small chunks, take it at a time, and then step back and look at what we've got. And then go back and look some more chunks, then step back and take a look at where we are. But I think we've got to move at a, at a comfortable pace, a comfortable pace for the planning board, a comfortable pace for the, the public also, because probably as much, if not more, import's going to come from them than from us. We're kind of like all together in this whole thing.
But if we take this and we go, and we, we can adjust the schedule as we go, but, but some of the, you know, on, I'm sort of looking here, and on, on some evenings, you know, there might be, say, five or six items. You know, four of them aren't too much, you know, show the water courses, show the boundaries of the lot, the thing. You know, that's not going to be much of, of a discussion, but, you know, what do we do? That will be a big discussion. So I, I try to go and put them on different nights. We can adjust the schedule, but at least I think we should go and say, look, let's try to go and have things, and we'll do it. And one of the things we'll do is we will provide information prior to that's available. Not only be online, but it'll be, you know, physically you see. One of the problems with this stuff is that, much as I like Rick's plans, you know, to download them, you know, it's, it's tough to, it's tough to download the stuff. There's so much, I don't know computers, but megabytes or whatever it is, it's, it's tough to download. When you download it, it's tough to see it. And unless you've got, you know, some capacity to expand it out again, it, you know, it's tough to read and tough to see. So we've got to do something.
I think.
Tim?
I was just going to say, it might make sense for Andre and I to talk a little bit about our staff memo at this point, since we're talking about scheduling and discussion. Andre, John Vogel and I put together a quick memo that would Andre start on if he wants.
Yeah, as you know, this is Londonderry, Londonderry's first P U D since it was adopted last year, this time last year. Obviously, the main tenet of the P U D is to master plan large tracts, and after which it becomes a new zoning for the area. And I state that because one of the, one of the things I think we're all struggling with is getting a little bit more meat to the bone. And right now, what we have before us is a concept of two, of the master plan, what was, what was derived from two design charrettes held in the summer and fall. And so from the staff's perspective, and, and, and I know over the last couple of meetings, I guess what we were hoping for, and maybe we just didn't communicate that clearly, is that they get a little bit more citizen input and residential input as to, is this concept acceptable? I think, after which, I think some frustration did come about of that, one, the board staff wasn't asking as much questions, and also, and, and conversely, we wanted to get a little bit more input as to, boy, is this program that is being presented to us acceptable? Since that time, there, there has been an email list created and questions established. And, and again, those press questions were passed along to the applicant to, to, to address as, as we move forward. A lot of the questions that will come out are the same questions that staff had, not only at the design charrette, but have now with regard to how you implement the P U D. What's going to be, what is, what's the program going to be comprised of? Now, when we look at, when we look at what we're looking to achieve is, one, is establish a timeline, you know, a schedule and a timeline by which we can work towards creating the, the master plan. And one of the things that we do is create a land use plan. And I think, I, I think what you heard Attorney Michaels talked about, talk about is, is getting input as to what land uses are acceptable. And I think that, that goes into that land use plan. I think before, yeah, once we get to the, the concept plan, I think you'll have a hospital, you have some retail uses, you have some housing. You know, I, I think some questions that you, we have is that, you know, what type of housing is it? How big is this hospital, how many beds? What are, what some of the retail uses are you looking to put down there? Those are the things that we need to get some specificity, specificity to, as to what they are, so they can, we can move on to, to the next level. So creating that land use plan and density as to what we're, what we're looking at to move it from a concept to actually building the stages of the master plan.
Just to follow up a little bit on what Andre's saying. It, from my perspective, if you don't have some general consensus between the board and the developer on what the general land use scheme is going to be for this project, you really can't proceed into any of the other items that are required for the P U D. You need to know what those land uses are going to be, with some relative specificity, so that they can start looking at the infrastructure requirements, the traffic impacts, the storm waters, drainage, water sewer. All those things really depend on exactly where the comfort level is between the board and the developer in terms of what the land use is going to be. So that really needs to be the first focus, I think, for the board and the developer at this point.
And that gets into the other aspects of the memo, which is basically, once you create the land use and the density plan, the infrastructure, traffic, development, design, and all those other things. And also the possibility of looking at the fiscal impact. And looking at a lot of the questions that, that were, that were given to us from the, from the residents in Londonderry, a, a good handful of, a good handful of those questions were fiscal impact related. And whether or not we have announces, I don't know if that's, it's not warranted now, but I think as we get into it down the line, it's something we might want to look into. So we want to look at those impacted by the police, and other. So we want to look at those impacted by the police and other town services that will come about from this, implementing this plan. And also, obviously, questions regarding the exit foray will come up as we look at the traffic impacts and, you know, again, once we get past one, which is the, the land use plan, all the other issues will have to be addressed, and exit foray does play a key role in it.
And the second part of the, the recommendations for staff was knowing that because this meeting was delayed two weeks because of the storm, the next meeting that we would typically hear a conceptual discussion would be February 9th, we weren't sure exactly what the developer's ability to turn around information was going to be in that short a timeframe. So what I had come up for recommendation is, is that at that February 9th meeting, we specifically talk and limit our discussion to the timeline, the formatting of how we want to do these future meetings and where they're going to be located. We're recommending that we dedicate at least two hours for these meetings specifically for this project, and that we hold off on further discussion of the components and information in item number one until we establish and get an agreed upon schedule moving forward at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We have the information to go and, on the, the 9th, to go and start talking about some of the things that Tim wasn't aware that we, we have information. So, you know, what, partly what I think we do is, we have to touch on the land use plan before everything else comes into, into play. That is our, our key element. And I think that, you know, that this is going to be working in process. We take and go the, the first part, we'll have a better, we'll have a better feel for what the timing is. To go and say now, you know, I, I arbitrarily went and divided things into three parts. They seem to make some sense. Well, it may take two sessions to do part one, and it may take, you know, but, but some of these things, it's just like Tim put up there. You've got to have the land use plan and density before you can move on to the infrastructure.
Well, I'm just wondering...
Evidently, there's problems with the sound system, so people listening at home aren't hearing things very well.
It's better.
Is it better? But here we get echoes off and on, and all of a sudden, I feel like I'm talking, I can hear my voice bouncing back to me, so, but we'll, we'll, we'll proceed.
I'm just wondering if the expectations are that you've already given us a land use plan in that, in the designs that you've given us, that you've given us a general idea of where you want single-family homes, where you want retail, where you want the hospital go, where do you want the, the commercial to go?
Yes, we have given you that. And part of it is for you to go and say, okay, is this all right? Do you want more? You want something more? You want something different? But we've given a, a general outline of things. We, we have things written down on that, which we've given, and so...
And I think, I think, actually, I did a quick presentation that I think will help with that, to show you where it is within the submitted materials, each of the submission requirements is located. And we're not saying it's final, here it is, take it or leave it. I'm just saying, here's where it is as a placeholder, so that as you want to look at density, you want to look at one of the land items, you can see where it is in the list. So there's the overall list. You know, the narrative...
Because I think one of the things that the board really has got to spend some time is density on this, this whole thing.
Right, but knowing that you have planned out that you want to have single-family homes here, you want to have some multifamily homes here, and you want to have some apartments over some retail here, do you have an estimate as to how many people? I know you have dwelling units, 1,300 dwellings. Do you have an estimate as to how many people will be in that area?
We can do an estimate of people based on a final use mix, and you'll notice that the, the plan says 1,300 units, plus possibly more for affordable or seniors. We haven't had that discussion yet. That did, people did tell me that during the charrette, they said, that's not enough units. I actually heard that several times. That may not be where this project ends up, but we need that number before we can do the multiplication. And how many, you know, single resident dwellings do you have? How many multi, you know, couples with children do you have? It's, it's a calculation and estimate that can be done, but we need to know the, the mix of housing first. And we just haven't had that discussion. You know, is, is 1,300 a good number, a low number, a high number? It's, it's, it's a starting number.
Okay, well, the question asked, that, that's a, is, it's a maximum number listed, though. The 1,300 dwellings is a maximum number listed in your proposal?
There is text that says, if you ask for more, we're willing to consider more.
If you ask, say, put workforce housing in or do something else and make it more dense, we do more. From our point of view, 1,300 is the, is the max.
Okay, so there are, then the answer would be yes, there are lower density options.
We can do nothing. I mean, we can have it all industrial or commercial. I mean, they, they're, the, the number is a, is a number as to what, what would be something to make a mixed-use community? You know, what do you, what type of number do you think you need? And that's based on some of the things we have, you know, we have proposed. You know, if the planning board goes and says, geez, we don't want any commercial here, okay?
In one particular area?
Or either in the area or how much, all these, it's a, it's a mosaic that all sort of, you know, fits together. There are, to make a mixed-use community, you have to have a certain amount of housing. The ordinance talks about six per acre, you know, we're barely two, okay? If you, if you go and have a commercial thing and you don't have a significant amount of housing, it's not going to work. You're not going to have mixed use.
There's a balance of residential, commercial?
Yeah. And, and then the, the question is, as we, we go along, we don't have the, it's not going to be all built now, it's going to be built over time. So for us to say today, we are going to build all one-bedroom units, I, I don't know what the market is today. You know, I, I know, you know, one of the questions, are you going to build McMansions? Well, I don't think there's a market for McMansions today. You know, I think there's a market for small, I think there's a market for smaller things. But as, before we come in with any housing or any proposed housing, you know, we're going to know what the market is, you know, at the time. What we're doing is, we're doing is, we're doing is zoning. The, the current zoning, you know, you have, say, 600 houses because it's 600 acres, you know, you could take out roads and so forth. You know, we're proposing that, you know, we have roughly 1,300 units. We may go down the way, we may not do that for a very long time. There may be a very long absorption rate. We don't know the, the answer, we know the answer to the mix.
Yeah, one of the things I'm trying to, trying to visualize is, is what does 1,300 dwelling units look like? What does 1,000 dwelling units look like? What does 700 dwelling units look like? You know, you know, from a, you know, design point of view and giving it that open village...
Well, that, that's the kind of discussion that I hope we can have. And you have to realize that on a project like this, it's going to look differently in different parts of the projects. You know, the current proposal is against some of the adjacent single-family residences to have single-family residences. And then more in the neighborhood center, have higher densities and more compact development. And we can show images and photographs, doesn't have to be rendering, we can just photograph something and demonstrate, this is what 12 units an acre looks like for four acres. This is what, you know, this density looks like. Because density is an abstract thing for most people, even land area is an abstract thing for most people. So you do have to do the math to calculate density, it gets pretty complex. People need images, so that's...
I have to work with visual things, I have to visualize it before I can figure it out.
Yeah, it's always, it's always better.
Yeah, I think that's probably the, probably the most important thing is, you know, the way I look at it, where it is more dense, still giving it that New England-y look to it, you know, instead of, you know, I mean, downtown Portsmouth is, is pretty nice and everything, but I want something that's like New England-y, Londonderry-type.
Like, we can go on the places that show smaller lots on, on a plan, and show, this is something that would, the type of thing, you know, that would be there. In the downtown, this is something that would be there. But if you ask me for sure what it's going to be over time, I could tell you what we plan now.
Right.
You know, I, I can't tell you for sure what the market's going to be later, you know. I don't know whether, you know, it's going to be one bedroom or three-bedroom. You know, I, I don't think it's going to be, you know, the big stuff. I think Londonderry's got plenty of the, the very big housing, very big lots, you know. You know, I, we don't know, but we can show you sort of what a, a neighborhood of a particular density looks like, and we can go and, and what we do is, we take, you know, as part of the question, and this, when we get, this is sort of an example of things we can do, we can show you, okay, this is a section of the project, okay? And this one, we're limiting ourselves to 50 dwelling units. So we're limiting in various sections how many dwelling units can be there. Now, whether at, at that time somewhere we decide to make something closer together or farther apart, you know, but we've limited ourselves, we will not have more than that. Like, say, in the, the Pillsbury Gilchrist Corner, we have that shown in one place with a limit. There's going to be no more than that many units in there. You know, now, when the time comes and we develop there, you know, I don't know whether it could be one bedroom, two bedroom, we don't, we don't know, but we're, we will have limited ourselves to no more than that. We're not saying that's the number we build, we're saying there's no more than that. And on the, the entire site, we're saying there's going to be no more than, say, 1,300. We may go along and be doing a section of the place, and the, the board or the public may say, you know, we'd rather have you do a denser here and less dense there. Okay? And, and part of that's going to be what the, what the market bears, but we're trying to do sections with limits.
Right. You know, one of the concerns people are bringing forward are the, the Gilchrist Road and Pillsbury intersection, and I know you've already talked about this, and so I just want to bring it up again, that you have a plan to correct that, that intersection, right? I, I thought that you had planned to sort of shave off something so that it's less of a...
The town has a plan to do that.
Okay, but...
You know, there's been a, a town plan, but what actually gets done is going to be based on, I mean, there's, there's a whole slew of things that go into what the, you know, if that ends up failing, it's got to be fixed, it's got to be, you know, it's got to be a bunch of criteria to be fixed.
Right, but if you guys are going to be the ones building there and creating that failing, failure...
You've got to fix it.
You've got to fix it.
Yeah, that's the way it works.
Right.
Yeah, that's simple. The, the equation is simple, you know? We mess it up, we fix it.
Andre?
I don't know, I'm just, I, I just think that there's some questions that, that are, that are general in nature so that, but, but, you know, asked and answered, but it's, it's funny that they're still here again, you know what I'm saying? Well, not funny, but I mean, and I appreciate that, that people haven't heard the answer, and so that's why it's here again.
I think it's only, it's only normal, you know?
Right, right.
Because, you know, and I think it's up to us to make sure that everything is, is done of what is asked and everything, questions are asked or answered.
Absolutely.
Andre?
Yeah, I, I don't know if you can, do we have the overall map of the, of the project or, the one that... Here you go. Part of the discussion that we, the staff had with the applicant with regard to, you know, what, what we're talking about, this flexibility in design, maybe, you know, as Attorney Michaels has indicated, that, you know, boy, this, we might have 10 units identified here, but we'll not go beyond 10 units, but those might be two families, or maybe one family, we're not sure yet. I mean, to a certain extent, the zoning ordinance, our present zoning ordinance allows for that. I mean, if somebody builds in, within the agricultural one zone, you could build one family or two family, and then the parameters are a little bit, a little bit different, the front end's a little bit different, but that ultimately will come out in this planning unit development ordinance. Staff concern is, you know, as was mentioned with regard to traffic, is that with regard to units, whether or not they're single-family or duplex, or in the commercial district, you know, if, if a particular use that we all agree upon should be in that particular, in that area, but that, that use is, is shifted to another area, the difficulty we have is that, boy, it, it changes the traffic patterns significantly, and therefore, whatever we looked at with regard to traffic patterns and improvements, you know, may change. So I think there, you know, I think, once we work our way through this program, whatever we ultimately come up with with regard to a land use plan, I, I think for the most part, you know, we, we need to stick with that plan. And if, and I think what the ordinance does allow, that if that plan changes, then we have to come back and readdress that here at the planning board and, and go through the proper procedures. But I, I think we need to tie down some things a little bit more securely than, so at least there's the, there's the transparency to whatever we agree to here ultimately translates into a master plan, which translates into a zoning code that would, that would operate this, this PUD as something that people said, you know, all right, I participated for six months or whatever, I know what the plan is, and they're implementing that plan. If anything, if, if anything changes, well, I know that it must come back here again, as opposed to saying, well, this particular use changed over here, and all of a sudden that hat takes place, then I, I think, I think that transparency is gone and that, that, I guess, that, I guess linear progression with regard to what we, what we agree upon somehow gets lost. So I, and when I look at this plan and the traffic, and I think the traffic issues and the infrastructure issues will, will, will be addressed, but I think the first thing is, when I look at that plan, there is, I think we talked about a hospital with a certain amount of beds, we talked about a commercial district that had a variety of uses from restaurants to stores. As I look at that plan, is that something, as we move forward, those are the questions that we need to answer, is that something that we're willing to move forward with? And, and our master plan, if that's yes, then we go on to the next level. What I think, what some of the questions that we had is that what, you know, what in, in that, in that phase from Pillsbury, Pillsbury Road down towards Route 102, or the existing market basket, there are residential uses in there. You know, one of the questions that will ultimately need to be answered is that what type of residential units are there? Are those single-family, are those high-density or whatever? Because it has an impact on the roadway design and the impacts and the things that we typically look at with regard to site impact. So I think that's where we are right now, is that, and I think, I think that's the question that keeps on getting asked and asked, is that, boy, we, we have a conceptual program before us right now that shows a variety of uses. I think that's where the input needs to be, is that do we accept that as the, as the, as we move forward, or is that something that we want to alter in some way?
Well, one of the...
I think, could I?
One of the questions here, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think there's a very, very important and perhaps fundamental misunderstanding about what, at least the way I understand this process is and what some people think this process is, and what the PUD master plan is. It's not a site plan. It's basically a rezoning. And we have to be specific within ranges of what's being proposed. But at least the way I read, the way I read the ordinance, and I'm, you know, looking to staff for input on this, it is specifically not site plan level detail, and not site plan level locking in of anything. And Andre and I have had a friendly discussion about the traffic issue in particular, and you just made a good point that I think supports my position on the traffic, because I take the position that the land uses should be able to move around some, and that when you actually propose it, and you come in here with a site plan or a subdivision application, then that's when you have to do the traffic impact analysis, because at that point you have to take into account what else has happened in town. You know, that might be five years from now, and there may be a new something on the other side of Pillsbury Road that's generating a lot of traffic that wasn't doing that today. Well, it should be taken in consideration when that new use is proposed, and it would have to address its, its impacts. And I don't want to get dragged into a traffic discussion, it's more, I'd like to stay back at what the master plan is, and I, I really think it is intended to be, in essence, and a complicated one, but a rezoning to allow different uses.
And I think the concern is that where you have this plan and you have set specific things in specific areas, I think the concern is from the people that have been, you know, expressing these questions, what is the, if this is the way it was built right now, what you've put on the board, what would the impact be? And is that something you feel comfortable that you can answer? And is that even a valid question?
Well, I, I think of it yourself. Is it a valid thing to say, anybody could build all of this like that?
No, I appreciate that. No, I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
It's really, that's an impossibility. It, it's a, it's a multi-decade project, and...
But you can, your, your question about impacts, okay? They're like a financial impact. The town has a program, that you crank in a bunch of things, you crank in so many buildings of this type, and it comes out and it says, this is roughly where your taxes are. You know what? We've had a demonstration here before the board, and, and there's something... So when, when somebody's asking about the financial impact, there's a, there's a program that gives some idea of what this, uh, stuff is based on the town of, of Lunenary. So, in a very broad sense, you can get, you know, is this likely tax positive or negative? You know, the town has software that you, you take, you know, some of the uses, you take some of the square feet, you run a calculation, and it, it comes up with some, you know, it comes up with some numbers. So that type of thing, you know, you can go and do. So there's some things you can get the impact, you know, you can get a rough idea of the impact.
Andre first. Andre?
I think some of the fundamental difference that, uh, Rick and I have is, is with regard to, I, I, I think his view is that, you know, you wait till the, uh, plan is actually implemented in order to look at the traffic. What I'm looking at is the ten thousand foot, foot level, not the, not the ten foot level. Cause we already did it, and we did it in the, uh, airport area. We, we looked at what the potential uses are in the potential area as it hooks onto the airport access road, and we looked at what that traffic would do to a lot of the intersections and roadways in between there and, and Route 28. And so we have an ideal as to if, if half of that is built now, it's gonna have X amount of impact with these intersections. If a hundred percent is built here, it's gonna have another X amount of impact on the, and, and intersections. That's what the PUD calls for, is that we have to get an ideal as to if all that is built, realizing that it, it will be a long time, it will be decades, this is not gonna be built overnight. It will not. But there's certain levels of the impact that this development will have, and I think we need to have an ideal at the ten thousand foot level as to if this were to be, um, uh, implemented, it's gonna generate X amount of traffic. If that X amount of traffic works your way through Lunenary's, uh, roadway system, it's gonna have X amount of impact here, here, and here. Now, if a third of that is built, boy, you know, it, the impacts start to shrink a little bit. And with the unknown of, uh, as a foray out there, then, you know, we, we will probably have to look at a, a, a smaller version of what you see there, um...
Initially.
But I think you still need to take that ten thousand foot level as to where those impacts are gonna be, so we have an ideal. Doesn't mean that all gets fixed right away, it all depends on what gets implemented. But we need to have an ideal, and that's built into the, um, in the ordinance.
Yeah, so we can, you know, I think we need, need to know generally what, what's there, and what the future potential impacts are gonna be, so the master plan can reflect that.
Again, we, we've done it. We've done quarter studies, we've done it on the airport area, we've done it on Route 28, we've done it on Route 102. You, you can do that.
One of the questions, you know, you, you talk about, uh, well, at some point we'll have a big discussion about traffic. But one of the things is, in Penningill Road, you know, you're in the process of getting financing, you've already, you've designed the road. You know, when you're going and doing that stuff, you know, we're gonna, if we go build a road here, and we go design, you know, we go and we're, we're coming before the board, give us approval to do this, we have to have a traffic study, because that's the time, you know, that's the time, um, you know, you do it. And I think in a broad sense, we have to know, and, but I think it's, you know, part of it is sort of elementary. You know, if this is done, it's gonna have an impact on the road. You take any of the things that become before this board. You know, you do almost any building, and it has an impact on the road, and you have to give something, but it's based on what's going on in the time. You did falling waters, you figure out what's going there. You know, that's gonna have to happen no matter what we do at this stage. You, you have to have every time a building is built, or if we change something. I think one of the questions that gets to what, um, what Mary was saying is that the, and, and this we need the discussion, you know, we have something in front of, in front of us that we can go, we said, okay, we have, let's call it the, the village section, okay? What, what's the idea? How much can we move there? Cause there's some things that you say, well, jeez, if we move, you know, building a few feet over, it doesn't make a lot of difference. But the, the question is, what area are you comfortable with, sort of more locking in? For example, we divide some of the residential sections in here, and, you know, we say, you know, that's not gonna have more than so many, you know, houses. Do you want those areas to be sm- smaller segments, bigger segments? But that, we have to get the feedback from.
Right, you do have to get feedback from. But I think what the, I think what you have said in, in the past, and during the shretts and everything else, is that the, the section that you're going to start with is that village section.
Correct.
Okay, so that is the one, that is the one that's having the most impact on the people who live here right now. Because we know, we travel up Gilchrist all the time, and we're already waiting, you know, forty-five minutes to get through the intersection when it's a baseball day. Because everybody's going to the game, okay? So, so we already have that frustration, and, and they look at the curb cuts that you have along Gilchrist and know that you wanna put some houses there. And, you know, I'm appreciative that you're doing the same type of housing across the street. I think that's a positive. But how do you deal with those curb cuts? Does the road have to be widened? All of those are questions that they, you know, that we're getting here that wanna be answered, because I think you already have a design that you have in mind, and that, and that you're saying, this is what we wanna do.
But you're, you, we have to be looking at the plans to understand what we're saying. We're saying, that segment, Gilchrist segment.
Right.
We wanna get it zoned, so it is housing and nothing else but housing, and we can do a maximum of so many things, and this is a rough idea. We will have to come in to you for anything we do. The, what the planning board is doing is saying, that's not gonna be commercial, that's not gonna be industrial, and that's not gonna be more than twenty-five houses, or twenty-five living units. That's what you're, um, what you're doing. And we're showing this as a, you know, a broad, you know, conceptual thing. Now, maybe today, um, if, if we were to go in today and add some houses there, maybe the traffic impact is high. But if we do it in ten years, maybe it's low. We've gotta address what we do at the time we actually do it. And, and we can't build unless we solve the traffic problem. We're not allowed to build again.
Right, but I think the argument would be that you have to imagine that it, that it is done now, that you, you do have to do an impact now to tell us what the impact would be. If you were to build them now, in that area, in, in an area where there is already a, a concern for traffic. I think that's, that's the, the feedback we're getting.
You don't do that on any other zoning you do in the town, at the time you do the zoning. You know, when you go and say, this is going to be housing, there's no traffic done when we re, rezone anything. It's when you build something that there is. But I, I think we have to go and, and if people say, for example, which they have said, well, jeez, cut down the number of entrances. That's fine, you go and design and cut down the number of entrances.
I mean, it's probably one, one way to deal with it. I know when we do have, uh, rezonings, there's a lot of the, uh, concerns of, of a site plan creep, creep into it, because people are thinking, uh, thinking ahead, and they, you know, and they get, you know, and everyone looks at it a little bit differently, of where the impacts are gonna be at that time for the rezoning. And, uh, I think that's where we get into, um, is, you know, taking a look at what we, what we zone, and, you know, I think where we put it has, has a, you know, probably impact on traffic. You know, that's what we kind of, have kinda got to engineer. Yanis has had his hand up for, for a while, so, uh, 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 our traffic specialist, so...
I'm Shostky, Director of Engineering, Public Works and Engineering. I think we are looking at kind of big misunderstanding on the approach of, uh, to this project. Maybe I misunderstand completely, but I look, what comes first? Chicken or egg? You come here with a project, it's your project, it's not planning board project, it's not ours. So you came with a conceptual plan, this is the huge amount of land that I want to develop. And our zoning ordinance says, if you come with this one, you might get a different zoning that town has. If you want to come with a regular zoning that we have, then approach that you're trying to take, it's perfectly all right. Come with every project at a time. And that's where we're gonna look at every project we come. If you want to come and use the PUD, if I understand this correctly, you have to present to the board, this is my master plan, that's what I will do, that's what I want to do on this land. Based on this plan, planning board will look, okay, I will, we will allow you for this kind of density, we'll allow you for this kind of different, different zoning that we have on the regular, you know, in a regular zoning book. So you have to commit yourself to some kind of plan that you're presenting. This is the concept. We are asking for, to tighten up this concept a little bit more, not to the exactly bottom line of parcel to parcel plan, but a little bit more, and you have to be somewhat committed to this plan. If you're asking that, I want this write-up first from the planning board, that I will have this density, this density, as this kind of stop and this kind of setbacks on my land, and then later on I'll come with a section, show you what I'm gonna build this, that's not how I understood. Maybe again, I misunderstand this concept of PUD, but I think that's where the board, I think I understand. Show me this, that we can put a hands-on. This is my plan. In this location, I will have my residential area. In that residential area, I am planning to build single family for this road. For this one, I am presenting, you know, duplexes. In this area, I'm presenting to put the stores, hospitals, or whatever. Now, in this one area, yes, if you're presenting that way, we will allow you for setbacks to be reduced from forty feet to twenty feet. The road maybe in that section could be twenty-five foot or twenty-four foot instead thirty-foot wide. This is gonna be arterial road. But, no, because that's what our approach is, that's what we are looking at this, a little bit more, tighten up this concept, because we are still keep working on this concept. And we are asking a little bit more commitment to this concept, and you're coming with the, give me the, the write-up, and then we will play with the concept years to come. And I think that's what is the misunderstanding by sitting and, and watching at a, for a previous meeting. Maybe again, I am misunderstanding this, but what I hear, that's what it is. That's why we are asking for the traffic information, you know, all, overall, because we want to know that this kind of plan will have this kind of impact on our surrounding areas. And not later on, con- site plan by site plan. Because if we will go that route, we might as well not have PUD, but just a regular development of the area. So this is, you have to bring something to the table before the board will says, okay, based on this, we will give you those different zoning. And that, maybe again, that's not the concept of PUD, but that's how, you, I think you misa- not that means you misunderstand, you're looking differently than, than I was looking at.
No, 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 we're not that different. Uh, and this is a discussion, I think, that I had, actually had with Mary at the charrette. We've gotta be generally specific. You know, the developer needs some flexibility, uh, in order to meet the market. And it's difficult to plan with specificity. I mean, you have to do a site plan to, you know, really plan this thing out, that's a ton of work. It's great work, but I don't think we should put all that on Mike's back at this point in the game. I, I wanna show, and we need to show enough detail to satisfy the board and the public, no question about it. And with regard to traffic, you, you have the authority to ask us for anything. I know that, John knows that, Mike knows that. You know, you have the authority. If you wanna traffic study, you have the authority to request one. I wanna have that discussion separately, so we, we have a better understanding of the project, and a better, better understanding of how the process works, and we can have, you know, an open discussion about it. There's no hide the ball on this project. We're just trying to be fair and reasonable and stay inside the way we've read the ordinance and New Hampshire statutes.
But one of our prob- we're, we're running the same problem we do every meeting. Unless we get the plan in front, and you say, okay, these are these buildings here, and, you know, Mary, you take your finger to say, that's what you did here, you know? And the, the board says, conceptually, you know, we'll, you know, these are the types of things you can change, these are what you don't change. We've got to go, we've, we've gotta have that where we get from you, okay, it, it, this, this part, this area, you know, this we want locked in concrete, this can be a little flexible, the market's gonna change. You know, but we need to get the impact from you, the input from you as to what, you know, as to what that is. And we're, unless we start getting at a plan, and we, we all go together and we say, okay, we're talking about the Gilchrist thing now.
Okay, so, can I just ask you this thing?
Sure.
The, we, I mean, at least, I, all right, I'm one person on this board.
Yep.
And it is our, uh, my opinion that, that we don't wanna be the ones that are directing that kind of conversation. We wanted the audience to do it. That's why we've been encouraging people to come to the meetings to ask questions. Now, Mr. Fauci was great and got all these questions for us. So a question is, would you consider a Christmas tree farm and residential golf course on that land? Is that something that you would be willing to take some of the commercial out? You know, I mean, the building out and leave it as open space and have a commercial golf course, but have residence along the golf course? And then have some, you know, a Christmas tree farm? Is that something the developer is willing to do?
I'm gonna say for him, no, and I'm gonna explain why. I, I heard earlier tonight Andre talking about the desirability for walkable mixed-use places. I've heard the board say that to several applicant, applicants who've brought things before you. And, you know, you've been disappointed that they're not doing that. That's what we're trying to do.
You can walk a golf course really easily.
People drive to and from their houses and golf courses. It's not a walkable neighborhood. It's not this, this kind of a place. And the idea, I think this goes back to the chairman's question earlier about density. When you don't understand density, it's always bad. And density done well is a good thing. Density done poorly is a very bad thing, I will agree with that. So let's figure out how we can get it right, and create density where it should be on this property. It's not all dense. You know, some of it's pretty lightly, um, imprinted, pretty much like its neighbors. Things like curb cuts and numbers of streets, that affects walkability. You know, walkable neighborhoods have a finer grain of streets and blocks than do large cul-de-sac type subdivisions. So, you know, we, that's why, um, I can't answer that question, it's not my... But if, if I'm asked to advise on that question, I would say no.
And I'm sure you would also say no, that you wouldn't have a Mall of America like in Minnesota.
Absolutely not.
That's not the plan.
Correct.
And it's not the place, it's not the plan, it doesn't make economic sense. The tree farm doesn't make economic sense, and the Mall of New Hampsh- I mean, the Mall of, whatever, the Minnesota Mall doesn't make sense. You have to meet what the market is and what the economics are. Either of those are on, you know, they're on the far extremes of the, you know, of the equation. You, you can't, you, you can't plan more than is, you know, economically feasible. Just, and the tree farm isn't feasible, the golf course doesn't make economic sense, and the, um, the, you know, the huge mall, take this, make one big mall, it just does not make sense, and...
Well, even if it made economic sense, it's not what the developers want to do. They wanna, this was really intended to be a signature project, and how, to show how, you know, it's unfortunate that in New England, I think at mo- at the present, this is one of the very, very few towns that you can actually build a bit of New England. Most zoning doesn't allow it.
So I know in the past, and I'm sorry to be, um...
No, no, that's, that's all right.
You know, to be...
This is a discussion, we keep things full and bagged for us.
I know in the past, you've spoken about some other developments that have happened, and these are twenty-year projects, they are not overnight projects. In the future, in the, and in a future meeting, could you bring forward some information on the projects, the other projects that have happened, whether or not they've been successful, whether or not they, they've been abandoned, so that we can have an idea of what might happen up here?
Sure, would you like to see photographs?
I've seen photographs, but I'm just talking about, I've seen photographs and I've seen that they look beautiful when they were built. But I'm talking about in the years that have ensued.
Are there tumbleweeds rolling down the streets now, that's, that sort of thing?
That sort of thing.
Okay.
Okay.
And there are, you know, we've collected a very large information, amount of information about those things, and we, we have information, and we'll make information available to whoever wants it.
Okay, well, that was a question that didn't end up on here, and then another question that didn't end up on there is this section that's over on the...
Yeah, the other side, yeah.
Yeah, why is it surrounded by the forest? I mean, the trees, you know, the green?
To have a, to have a, a green area around, um, housing, to have a...
It's partly topographic, too.
So it's not buildable, and that's why it's like that?
Well, it's, the site's gonna be tremendously regraded, so to say it's not buildable, um... When that amount of effort, no, it's not, it's not that it's not build- some, there are some wetlands. it's not, it's not that it's not build, some, there are some wetlands, and those are less buildable than other places, but there is some topo as well.
And, and the road, you gotta understand, that road is designed already, and so...
Right, that's four A, right?
Whatever is done has to match that road, and so, you know, you, you gotta go and make it match, or you have something that's awful.
I'm gonna see if that's, the interior roads are there so that you reduce the speed, right? Is that why the interior roads are designed the way they are, so curvy and stuff?
Yes, it's called deflections.
Okay.
And, and also to pull them off the...
Or pedestrian-friendly type roadways.
Also to pull cars off the main road that would head into dairy. So if you wanna deal in that area, you get off, and you go onto those other roads.
Okay.
Okay. Jim Butler back there had a question. Will come forward, just to name an address for records, please?
Jim Butler, fifty-seven Mammoth Road. I've talked to a few people in town, and they are having a hard time conceptualizing this, and one comment was, the designer talked about Kentlands a lot, and you talk about pictures. I would like to see, and other people would like to see, a video presentation. Makes a big difference than just seeing pictures. Have an actual ride tour or walk through video presentation of Kentland, so you can see more of a three-D approach to what's going on, I mean, renderings can change. I agree with our department head here, we need more solid concrete plans on what you wanna do, especially where the market basket is. You know, you come to us and show us what Mike wants to do, and then we can deflect it back and say, yeah, that makes sense, or it doesn't make sense to us. We just, someone's gonna take the first step forward here, and if it means preliminary plans on your part, just say, okay, this is what we're gonna put down there, we can look at it and say, yeah, we agree to it, or we don't agree to it, and we can go back and look at traffic studies and start doing traffic studies. I think you gotta put a, a bigger foot forward now, and let's get something concrete from your side, so that we can come back and look at it. You're the builders, we aren't.
You guys are not gonna be doing anything, you're not, this doesn't include anything that has to do with the current market basket right now in that strip.
But I'm talking about behind it, where the, the hotels are gonna go, where the real density is for the commercial. Take the step forward and, and bring us some preliminary plans that we can look at. You know, this is just a guessing game to me, and you say you wanna move it around, well, well, give us a little more concrete information and, and plan, and then let us go back and look at and say, you know, I mean, you could tell me that the hospital, you may wanna move the hospital farther up, uh, ninety-three. Where do you want that hospital? And where do you want that playground? I mean, there are certain things that are gonna have to be concrete in this plan, and I think the most important part is the area behind market basket where the big density is gonna be.
Okay, we're trying to do that.
Okay, thanks, you had something, Andre?
Now, this, this is the bill of, what Yanis was saying, and, and our discussion on the zoning, I, I think that, once, well, the master plan sets the stage for the zoning, so, I mean, I, I think the specificity, what we're looking for is that, boy, if we all agree on this plan, let's use this plan as an example, then my guess is that the zoning that will be derived from that would be, would allow for hospitals or whatever that zone is called, the village's commercial, whatever, would allow hospitals, parking garages, and so on and so forth, that carry that particular out. Now, the flexibility, what I'm concerned about is that, boy, if it gets to that point where we say, boy, this is great, here's the zoning, and you say, you know, I wanna slide this up here into the residential zone over there, then, then that changes the complexity of the plan tremendously.
And, but one of the things we need, what we need, is to have the board and others looking, this is the stuff, and say, okay, you know, if you move a few buildings a little bit, that's fine, this is the threshold that you have to go back to get the master plan changed, but, but we need, we need...
I think we're talking about the same thing, is that, well, if we designate an area, say, village's commercial, and, and the hospital goes over here, and this goes over here, it's within that district, then, you know what, you, you can almost live with that. Is this that when you start, the flexibility, when you start moving a commercial district over into a residential area, 'cause that better fits the plan, then, boy, everything that we worked to up to that point is different?
I don't think you're allowed to do that under the way the PUD master plan would be structured. If, if we're setting up specific zones that say, this is gonna be in this area, and it's proposed move into an area where that's not contemplated, they're coming back for an amendment to the PUD.
And that's what I was just wondering, make sure it's clear.
And I, I tried to anticipate some of that, and some of that's built into the documents that have been submitted to you, like, and I explained this at the first or second meeting, I forget which, but if you look behind you, the, those yellow areas, those residential areas, for example, and then you look at, I'll blow them, blow them up. You look at the first, that level one that says, you know, on the west side of ninety-three, let's look at these two residential neighborhoods, and that's what you get to do. They're that big, that many dwellings, and the only commercial use would be home occupation. Not much different than your existing zoning, except in this one, because there's a civic building shown, you could have civic, and nothing else. So, as, as we get through the discussions, absolutely, and John has said this too, we're absolutely seeing limitations, can't put the hospital on W-28, can't put an office building on W-23, can't put a restaurant on there without coming back for a whole new master plan, just as Tim just said. So, it's...
And then there's these setbacks and things of that sort.
The setbacks are all gonna be, we're all gonna agree to that, you know.
The regulatory framework is, I think, a little bit further down the list, it's the land use, it's the infrastructure, it's all those things that we need to get, the broad impacts associated, then when we're pretty much in agreement between the board and the developer, at that point, that's when we start putting teeth to actual regulatory language.
Yeah, I think it's just the, the land use and, and density, I think density's gonna be the, the big one.
So, Mr. Chair, if, if they come forward with this plan, you know, for our first couple of meetings to, to address the things that they've indicated as number one, I think that will give everybody the pay, the, what they need in front of them to be able to say, okay, that area is acceptable that we have residential there, and that area, it is acceptable that we have residential there, I mean, commercial or retail.
Yes, I think that's the, yeah.
And we, we can answer, you know, some of Jim Butler's questions. That's where the village is gonna be, this is the rough density, this is what it is, this is, you know, we would, we would, you'd say, you know, this is the flexibility, have this flexibility you don't have, but, but we have to have the conversation on, on something there. You, you may say, geez, you know, I don't care what you do along the end of ninety-three, you move those buildings anyway, and that's fine, however, I don't want residential or something. Well, then that's fine, then we, we put in that that's, that's what we don't do, but we need to get, the, the question always has been, what level of flexibility and what level of tightness? We're, we're obviously not at a, at a site plan, okay, so, and we're not at a, you can put anything wherever you want, you know, where in between is the, you know, is the...
Happy medium.
Yeah, the happy medium, the reasonable place to be, and we need the discussion about, you know, some of the items, so we know when we, we have this, this is, this is what we can do, this is what we can't do.
I know, but I think, what, I think what has to happen is you have to come forward with the proposal, just as you showed right there, W-2A is gonna have residential, this is how many units, and all of us can just flip through the pages, and we can say, yes, that's acceptable, no, we'd rather see this.
Exactly what we want.
And then we could, I think one of the things, we wanna play with the, the density, you know, and how it, how it's kinda gonna, gonna look.
Yep, and that's, those are some of the things that are a part of it. One of the things is that, you know, some of the small print on there that defines some of the stuff, and some of the other papers, unfortunately, you can't see very well here. One of the, one of the problems is that there are limiting factors on some of the plans here, but you can't read them very well.
Right, but why aren't you able to just do what you just did there with those sections? I mean, if you had, if you had every single section, I mean, there are sections, it's, you know, fifteen sections or twenty sections, and the sections all come together as one master plan.
And some, as I, the two I picked, I tried to pick two, one extraordinarily simple one, the one with just a little tiny bit of civic, just to show you that, you know, we can go from very simple, it's not hard to understand at all, to slight higher degree of difficulty, to, you know, the village center, which is very much more complex.
Okay, but, and I think that nobody's gonna feel comfortable till they see what that village center complexity is.
We can, we can blow it up, no problem with that.
Yeah, 'cause I think that's where the, the focus is, and that's kinda where my focus is, is, you know, I don't want it to look like a city, you know, but yet, I mean, there's gonna be reasonable amount of, of density for ways designed, but, you know, one, I don't want too dense, that, you know, I guess my concern is I don't want too dense.
Would you like to see some comparisons with streets you might know, in terms of their length and width, and buildings like Main Street in Concord, or Elm Street, or Market Street in Portsmouth, or, you know, you pick it.
Or even some of the...
Some things you can visualize, if we have a block that's three hundred feet long, this is what a three-hundred-foot block looks like.
I think, though, when you have a picture, it's two D, so you don't really get the, the idea. If you had somebody with a camera that drove their car down that road, so you could see, you know, I mean, I, I think that the idea of the video is, pardon me?
I think ground-level things are things the board is struggling with. It's one thing to look at it from a top-down plan view, it's another thing to experience it from a ground level.
I mean, if you could get Google Earth to go in there or something, it's a street view.
Riding in a car, the perspective from walking on the street or something, you know, which is probably around the same, the same height than what you, the whole visual aspect, that's what people, that's what people see, you know, whether they're in a city or whether they're out in the country.
See more as a pedestrian, you have more time to.
Yes, you see a lot more, especially walking some of the town roads as a pedestrian, the things you never even knew were there, there.
Would it help the board for me to go through just quickly and point out where the submission items are in the package that's been submitted, or do you not care about that?
We'll just go the next meeting and then come in and go down through one, two, you know, whatever.
Right, well, yeah, I think the, going through the list is, is good, and I, and I think it's really giving us the visual to tie the, the density to how it looks and, and the, you know, probably land impacts and so forth.
So, so the next meeting, we, when we come in and go over, say, the first group of, you know, some group of items, you know, working on the land use...
Yeah, it's really...
That we go and also bring you some visuals.
Yeah, 'cause I think land, land use and density is gonna be the big thing, I think what's...
The rest falls into place after that.
Well, more or less, probably, but I think that's, that's the, the, the big one.
That can be completed after.
Right, and I think people have a bunch of questions after that, you know.
There's an implied mix in the plan that's in front of you, and it's not, I haven't numbered it, but there are actual lots drawn, and if you add up those, they don't total thirteen hundred. So that, that implies a certain number of apartments and multifamilies and, and other, in the more commercial areas, but just telling you that those numbers in those different neighborhoods might help you understand the plan also.
And I think that's what they're looking for, is those numbers in that particular area.
And that was one of the questions, is with the plan, because it's hard to, hard to identify what the multifamily or the lots are, and what the townhouse lots are, and what the single-family house lots are.
And, and again, even though, it, it's not to say that that one has to be the townhouse lot, it just has to be within that area, right? But you have to give us an idea, you envisioned forty of these, or you envisioned whatever.
Right, and I, I divided it up into, I called them level-two overlays, and I don't know how many I have, whatever, it's not important. We'll agree on how many we need, and that establishes that next level of specificity. So you've got the level-one, which is the real, you know, high level, level-two, and then the written master plan, which establishes some additional criteria, and then the list of uses for each of those areas, so that we know, you know, I really wouldn't want an office building here, and we agree that that's okay, and so no office building's gonna go there, things like that. So, the, the greatest flexibility that I see a need for is in the neighborhood behind the market basket, and I'm gonna think about how to address that need and your desire as well.
Okay, and besides this show, which, you know, has a huge audience, I would love to, if we do something, if you do something that, that gives us video, put it on the access center on a more...
Basically, you're inviting them to our show, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good, I mean, utilize, yeah, CTV twenty as much as we can with this.
If, if this PowerPoint is posted, and folks are looking for where in the submission the different things are, there are check marks and arrows to the different parts of the submission, so...
I'll have this posted tomorrow.
They're not, they're not final, they're placeholders, so that, you know, you'll know in constructing the submission, what I was thinking, what John was thinking, what Mike was thinking, and it, it was intended to get us started. I think we've at least started that discussion a little bit better tonight.
Okay, Yanis?
I don't know, would it be helpful if you would come with maybe presentation showing the skeleton of your, starting with the road layouts? Because we have this, and then in the future, obviously, you don't know, because some back alleys, some smaller connecting roads, you're planning to change, because you will not know right now, this is a master plan, but some major roads, it probably will stay the same as they are, because that's your plan. But somehow, we have this conceptual plan, but I don't think it was ever explained to planning board or us, now, this will be the road, it'll be the width of the road, that's where this arterial road going, right? This is the connection to O Street, this is a connection right here. In this scale, we see a bunch of roads over there, but I don't think we had ever presentation that somebody kind of visually, like you will come with any subdivision with any plan, showing, okay, now, from one oh two, we're gonna enter to this one, this road's gonna make connections to Pillsbury Road, that is gonna go farther, that's what could generate the questions. How are you planning this here? Because now it's gonna be a loop road in this village here, you know, there might be another side alleys from that village, that eventually, they might, in the, in five years, they change a little bit, but this major loop, it will stay, because again, again, my, my concern was, for example, that you will have a road coming up in this concept, going to the west from exit, if you put the exit four A, and you're coming to the exit four A with the, with the road coming down, we know that that road cannot be a driveway basically to the small private subdivision. This is, it would be a major entry to major highway that has to serve, just like going to the east, it serves east dairy and whole dairy, if we'll ever build this, it will be serving the whole western part of London Dairy. It cannot be a ramp to the private subdivision, and right now, if it's shown as a private subdivision, and that's your concept, that will generate exactly my question, I'll go to the microphone, that is, you know, you're coming from a highway with the two-lane highways to your little roundabout, that is not something that we would ever envision as a master plan. That could be a connection, if you can put that slide over there showing that, oh, you're controlling that.
That's, that's one, we just started doing that, and there's another piece that fits over here, we were, we've been talking about.
Why, why am I...
North, north is this way, unfortunately, this is the east side of ninety-three.
All right, okay, so, okay, so you flipped it. Now, I'm looking, just if you put the, the previous, the, the original plan that you had, the very big concept of your plan, okay, this is a good one, yeah, no, that, that is a good one. So just above your arrow, you're showing that to the west, you have, in the future, one day, the exit four A could be built going west, and that will turn with that loop all the way down to Pillsbury Road, more likely, and there's nothing going towards Mammoth Road and towards the connection of west, west of, of town of London Dairy. That would be our, as a master plan, we would look at this, what is your connection in that direction? Because people will have the third access to the highway, one is exit five-four, now, with investment of building this exit four, this will be the only connection we'll have to the highway, people from the central London Dairy will have to get there, how do we get there? You will make a connections to the road, but the same as we are designing, or they are building and designing going east, goes all the way to Tsuneto Drive, going through Schutz Corner, and so on, it's a major highway, major improvements over there, because that, that is the, with the relief, and brings the traffic from dairy to the, to the ninety-three. That's the only way I can see how ever exit four A going west would be approved by the state, by us, and by feds, but it's not, so this would be maybe one, maybe we can start with this concept by showing the skeleton of the roads of this village and the development, because what Mary was asking, why the roads are over there on the east side? So now, you can come with a plan showing exit four A already designed by, by CLD for that, for that concept, that's the major road. Now, we will have this industrial land over there, and these are our roads coming, and, you know, they, they could be perfectly acceptable to the planning board. to the planning board with this kind of design. But then also, we don't have the same kind of concept and view, how do you envision this to the east? With the exception of this conceptual design, and you said, that's not very much, I, I want to change this anytime. I will come later with a site plan. And I don't think, that's what I think we have as a staff, kind of tough time to deal with, that we can envision that you will change some little stuff, but not a, not a major artery or roads that you're planning to build over there.
But we can deal with some of that by the language that goes, we, we show them the road and we say, this particular category road, you know, that stays. You know, the, the, we go to another category, say the ones around the houses and something else, and those can move around. But the others have to generally stay where they are, but we can do that by, you know...
See, by, by, I don't think by the language that is put in a P U D, that I will have flexibility to change that. It has to be attached, that language has to be attached to the plan. Maybe I'm, as engineer, I look that way.
I think, I think...
Because, you know, I want to see the plan and then a language goes to the, the, the plan, not just the reverse. Planners might think, you know, no, but Andre, the same way, I think he agrees with, with me looking at, at this concept, that we want to see that kind of, you know, that skeleton more developed, and then the language and the zoning assigned to that skeleton. And you started, when you were starting showing the, the zoning, so you were going in that direction. But I think, you know, maybe, maybe coming and explaining that, what is your vision for that traffic flow? That the major roads in that area, that could be the first approach, and again, that's just a suggestion.
I think there will be both, I think there'll be both the, the plan of the roads, and, you know, we started to do this, and I'll not flip north the next time. Uh, DPZ actually helped with that. So, and it may be, for example, and neighbors here, please don't freak out, this is just purely a graphic example. Let's say that staff, we felt, or you felt, planning board felt that a connection, uh, in the future, something like this was important, or like this, or, or like this. We can put a line on the plan, we can put language on the plan, saying that at such time as that's developed, we need to consider whether corridor needs to be preserved there. You know, and then it can be addressed, and it could be dependent on, I don't know what's being planned over here. That's what I thought. But, you know, to address Yannis's, I, I'm talking a little bit in the abstract, but if, if, I think we can preserve the, the notion of the regional component, which I think is what you're talking about, and not just the local need.
Regional transportation.
No, yes, but, eh, for example, if, if you're showing the master plan, I will connect to the exit four A going west, just like you're proposing here. That, in my vision, will never exist that way. So right now, I can tell you, that exit four A will never exist that, in that shape. Because if the exit four A will go west, it will go somewhere if that would be permitted, because that's a completely different project. Exit four A going west, it will have to start as a new project to be permitted, it's not even, you know...
Yeah, yeah, we know that.
So, but, but your master plan is showing, I will go this way. So now, is that feasible, even that will ever be, be able to build that way? So this is the flexibility that we might think, well, i- i- it is, it is a, no, I don't wanna say it's a dream, but it is, I don't think it will happen that way. So, eh, do we, do we approach this with a, with a little bit different skeleton than, eh, than that road will connect somewhere over there? But the planning board just wants to know, if you're going and developing so much north of Pillsbury Road, and the only way you can do it, if you have this exit four A going west.
Well, no...
And that's in your ma- master plan.
Yannis, this is shown as almost all residential, and it's not dependent on that connection.
Yes, but the impact of the traffic coming from those residences, what I'm hearing, is that the concern is that those people are trying to go on the highways, they're either gonna come down to...
Come down, yeah.
The traffic is... They have to come find ninety-three somehow.
Well, hopefully they'll have to find it less than some other folks might to, because there'll be more stuff nearby them.
See, but if you look so...
That's a separate question, though, that's a, that's a completely separate valid question.
But if you, if you would show the exit like this, coming from ninety-three, obviously you have to throw that a mix traffic coming from ninety-three to that exit. Oh, it's gonna go, and where's that going? Through this two-lane highway down to the middle of this roundabout and down to, you know, to the village? It will choke, it will choke right there, anything that is coming from over there. So eh, that road has to come from that exit, just like you're proposing on the east side. Because east side, you have a better grasp to it, because it's already, conceptual design is done over there. Going for the, for the exit going east, but the west is, is so iffy, that is very difficult for me to, you know, to see that this concept and this, eh, this approval, and where's the... So now, when I ask you about the traffic, he says, I don't know how the traffic's gonna go, you know, but eh, you have to provide the traffic with this master plan, and eh, he says, well, later on, when I start building, I will show you the traffic. So, so this is like, how do we approve the master plan, not knowing how the traffic's gonna have a, effect on the, on the side roads? And that's what we keep going back and forth, and eh, and we are right now here, not knowing how to even go forward. Any, in what direction and how...
Food for thought.
Mr. Chairman, I think we just have to start.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have to go and, you know, start, this is the outline, and, you know, these are the different sections, and then sort of work our way through. One of the things is, you know, there has to be a, a road plan, that's one of the items. But we, you know, as Yannis is saying, everybody, we, we have to understand sort of what we're doing.
Yeah.
Then we can really work on the road plan.
Look at the road framework or something, from, from that point.
But I, you know, just because there're questions about part, I don't think means we don't just, you know, we don't start having some of the basic, um, you know, discussions and sort of a, you know, some of the things that Mary was bringing up.
Yeah. Mike, you, you, something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, two comments, one practical and one broader.
Mike, name an address.
Oh, sorry, Mike Spelz, eighteen Sugar Plum, thank you. I, I'm, what I'm gathering from the discussion tonight is that there may have to be a sort of Plan B, um, that says, in the absence of, in westbound exit four A, we, we would do this. And, and then you'll have the substance to do a traffic plan to see whether the existing roads or proposed improvements could support it. And I know that's extra work and extra enduring, extra expense, but as Yannis just said, how can you possibly approve a plan based on the existence of four B, of four A westbound, when you won't be sure for years and years whether that's gonna happen? So you, I think you need to have this, this alternate, uh, more subdued plan for the, what we call the Village Center, that it could be doable without, without four A westbound. And then you, then you, on that basis, you can have a land use plan, which will generate a traffic plan, will allow, will allow you to answer the question, can it be supported or not with the existing infrastructure? So that's just a commoner's thought, I guess. But why, I wanna also make a plea to both the planning board and the applicant, uh, to recognize the fact that, you know, the great farmer in the sky, when he used the last glacier about ten thousand years ago to distribute agricultural soils, was very generous with Iowa and Kansas and California, and very stingy with little old New Hampshire. Uh, six percent of our soils are prime agricultural soils in the entire state. Unfortunately, Leonardary got more than its fair share, and about a hundred and twenty, thirty acres of that is sitting on the Village Center. So I hope that we can find a way to preserve more of those agricultural soils, whether it's in backyard gardens, or a tree farm, or a golf course, if it has to be. But, but in some way, not pave over most of those hundred and twenty acres. Uh, and, you know, I'm, I'm sure I can speak to the conservation commissioner when I say we'd be willing to, to work with the applicant to figure out a way to do that. Uh, we, we have a precedent, um, in Leonardary and the Evans community already, where we worked with the developer to, um, preserve a, a large amount of open space that was originally intended. But, uh, for God's sakes, in a state that only has five days' food supply and is looking to a future with a very expensive transportation, to, to find a way to keep the land that we use to feed ourselves. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you're, you're welcome. Is there anyone else, any comments or questions, Marty? Uh, name an address, I keep forgetting that.
Martin Surgis, seventeen Willwood Drive. If we go with this plan as was presented to us at the Design Charette, and exit four A is, you know, distant dream right now, uh, the minute you start building behind market basket, I hate to be too practical on this, but, uh, the first thing you're gonna need is a road into the project. And before you can build a road into the project, you need water, sewer, and a way to take, uh, rainwater away. Isn't that the basic thing before you start building any houses, any kind of density whatsoever? And all that traffic is gonna be coming through four. Uh, right now, eh, you know, at four o'clock in the afternoon to five, that road is horrendous. Uh, that road will be in a very short time in failure. We would have to increase, uh, Route one oh two in that section, at least to three lanes on each side, maybe four. And then you have to build a road next to the market basket, uh, the old one, to get into the project. Is, this is what was presented to us at the Design Charette, that they were gonna extend the road from, uh, one oh two all the way to Pillsbury, and then start building out from that. Uh, otherwise, all the traffic, truck traffic, tradespeople and all that's gonna have to go up Pillsbury or, uh, around the corner to the other side of Pillsbury, and then into Ash Street and into Rockingham. And all those roads are very narrow, and, you know, I don't know, I don't see this hap... I see a lot of traffic issues with this, unless, uh, four A is built to relieve some of that stress. But, uh, I see a lot of problems around market basket, definitely. Uh, eh, 'cause originally it was proposed that they build the town center, the, uh, couple of retail shops, uh, the parking garage was gonna be moved from where it is now to there, and you start developing that urban-town-center kind of concept. But, uh, I see some issues there. Uh, the only other question I have is, uh, if, if you have been involved in the Mashpee Commons development, in Mashpee, Massachusetts at all. Okay, I've walked that, if people wanna see what some of that looks like, I suggest people either go to the mashpeecommons.com website or actually go down there, it's only a two-and-a-half hour trip. And, and I've gone to the restaurants, I've walked the streets there, I've seen their concept of the small streets with, uh, a little bit of parking on the side and then the peripheral parking. And I didn't see really a big issue with snow removal and that kind of stuff there. Uh, but, you know, from what I saw there, it looked nice. They built the retail first, the houses are just starting to come in there now, it's been in the works for at least fifteen, twenty years. The last time I saw it was about almost twenty years ago, when they first built the corner section. But if people wanna get an idea what this looks like and visually walk through it, I suggest you go there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I was in Mashpee last weekend, and I never knew.
We can pull the microphone right out, it's easier.
Is it gonna fall off?
No, you, no, he can hang right onto it separately, that's, whatever's easy for you.
I have, uh, some notes here.
Okay, uh, then, then, name an address, please.
Anne Champeau Wedgwood Drive. The man before me mentioned, um, Mashpee Commons. I was wondering if the, uh, this planning board or the town planner has talked to the town planner or planning board in other towns with similar, uh, this type or similar projects that already, that are already in existence? Just for, actually for, to find out the positives and negatives as far as it relates to Leonardary.
Yeah, I don't know, uh, I don't think we have at this point, but definitely is one of the things that will be done. Uh, you know, to get input from, from them and, uh, you know, how, how they dealt with things also, so. And, and I, I know the planning, planning association's very, very active and communicate together very well, so.
Yeah, I've been down to Mashpee Commons, and I have, I have gone onto their site and see the zoning that supports Mashpee Commons, but I have not talked with the, uh, the planner down there as of yet.
I was just wondering if the planning board and the, or the town planner has, from Leonardary.
I'm the planning director, so I...
Oh, excuse me, what?
I'm the planning director, so I...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. He's the head honcho for...
Um, let's see. Another question I had was, um, I was concerned about, um, this development from the, uh, from the standpoint of, normally when, what I've seen from developments, when they're built, they have green space on surrounding the community. And, um, the housing is usually towards the center of that, um, development. On this plan, there's a lot of, um, housing on the perimeter of the development. I'm concerned because that development, um, the perimeter abuts single-family homes of an acre minimum, hundred fifty-foot frontage. And what I've seen from this plan is, um, those neighbors are gonna have across the street from them, um, much smaller lots with much smaller buildings on them. Is it fair that the townspeople who are already live on these roads that, about the project, to have this type of development right across the street from them?
Yeah, I think one of the options we have, that, that we can design that, so it's like, you know, single family on one acre lot. Uh, so it, I mean, it's similar, similar, similar density, let's say.
Then, then that's what I was gonna ask, is, um, is there a minimum, is there a minimum lot size established and a maximum lot size established for this development?
Not at this time yet, they haven't got to that point of the, the regulatory framework for this project is down the road. It has not been developed at this point yet.
Okay, I'm, as far as the plans that are developed already, what, just visually looking at them?
Yeah, this is only a proposal from the developer, so we haven't, we haven't had our chance at it yet, that's where we're getting to.
Okay, I'm, I'm just thinking, because I went to the Charette last year, and I'm just thinking about what they were presenting, which looks very similar to this one. And the size of the houses, for example, on Gilchrist Road, um, and people mentioned the curb cuts, but, um, the curb cuts are, they mentioned seven, but the curb cuts lead to multiple houses on those lots. So there'll be, it's a lot denser than just seven curb cuts. Also on, uh, Havi Road, um, the north section near, um, the cemetery, I was concerned about that, 'cause that abuts, um, single-family homes, and it's denser than one acre, hundred fifty-foot frontage. Um, I'm concerned because my development abuts that development.
Yes, I mean, that, that's a concern of us also. This, I think, basically what came out of the Design Charette from back in September.
Right. That looks very similar to it.
Yeah, it's only, uh, at this stage, just a, a proposal, you know, they just put something on the table. So we have, we as a town have to work to have something there that, that, uh, we want, that we're comfortable with.
Okay, I'm happy to hear that.
We, we have a long ways to go.
On the plan, it was just mentioned that, um, exit four A, uh, mentioned about exit four A going west. Yannis, I, I heard today that it hasn't been permitted yet?
That's correct.
That's correct, right.
It would have to go through its independent, independent, um, environmental impact reporting. Uh, the, the east side has gone through that, and as a matter of fact, we have a draft final impact statement that we're reviewing, but if the west, if there were gonna be a westerly approach, they would have to go through its own independent, um, NEPA requirements.
Is, um, is, um, it was mentioned that it, this has to make economic sense. Um, does it still make economic sense if exit four A west isn't built? This is for the developers.
Yes.
It's still...
There, there is a way to make it make sense.
Okay. Um, let's see. Um, as far as, um, Pillsbury Road is concerned, um, west of Gilchrist, excuse me, east of Gilchrist, there's a, um, I noticed that the developers put in, um, two stop signs or two lights at a jog towards the... towards the middle portion of the plan. Right now, Pillsbury is a east-west connector road between London Dairy and Dairy. And what I'm saying is obstruction to that connector. Where it jogs, it's, it's gonna slow or stop the traffic. At that, can you, can you find it on the plan?
This is Pillsbury. It's, it was drawn a little bit wrong in the plan.
Okay, is it straightened out now?
This is the north-south road that has the jog in it.
Okay, which one is, could you tell me if Pillsbury is straight now?
Yes, it's straight.
Okay, the jog's out of it?
Yep.
Okay. Do I see a school building right there? Is that what that is with the, the Steeble?
I think from the charrette, wasn't a space left for a potential school?
Yeah.
And is that the original Woodmont Building?
We're, we're here.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Woodmont Building, yeah, you see that.
Okay, I'm concerned also about traffic from the schools. And what I'd basically like to see is on our connector roads that exist, less concentration on the development and more towards the interior, move more towards the interior of these separate lots, north of Pillsbury and south of Pillsbury. So, that Pillsbury Road isn't used as a center of their village and traffic really gets slowed down. It's gotta be kept as a connector road between, is one of our more main roads, you know, like we have Gilchrist going north and south, Pillsbury going east and west.
Yeah, I know, some of our roads, you know, like especially the easily part of 28 from exit five, there's a nice tree canopy and everything, and that's, even though there's a lot of houses in there, there's a nice tree canopy. And I know with some of the P O D regulations, we look to create a canopy or something, so it's used as a, as a road and not so much for access or anything, or access is limited onto the road. That's, you know, I think, a concept anyway to, to explore. When people wanna travel along roads, I think they get one impression when there's buildings right next to them and more of a rural aspect if there's trees there and then maybe the buildings for the-
Well, that's, that's part of the reason for this rendering is to generate discussion about, you know, should there be a place on Pillsbury Road and beside it, or should it just be more of a through function? You know, I hear this lady's perspective, but, you know, there may be other perspectives as well.
Yeah, but it's, it's under consideration, you know, that, you know, it's, it's on the table for discussion, so.
I looked at Mashpee Commons, I went to their website, and that, that development has been in existence since about 1986. They have their master plans right on their website. If you're interested in looking at actual, for example, the plans for the roads, they have some illustrations on that website that you might wanna take a look at. If you could tell me if those are gonna be similar to the ones that are gonna be developed for London Dairy?
I don't remember, we can check.
It's interesting to look at that website to see, you know, what the possibilities are and, you know.
Yeah, it's always good to look at other things and then bring it back and say, how do we want it? Look for London Dairy, what's gonna-
Right, because-
Work for London Dairy.
When I went to the charrette, they were saying that they'd like it to look like Portsmouth. And they have many illustrations of, of buildings from Portsmouth and that area and, and streets. Mashpee Commons was built, I guess, to be more like some of the towns in Massachusetts. And they show illustrations like that, so you might wanna take a look at that just for an idea. And look at the, the drawings of the roads that they proposed. And you, you, I think you'll get a feel for what it might look like. I know you're talking about getting a, a video of it, but that, that'll give you an idea of what the road widths.
Might be a start.
Right. My question, I have another question about the commercial along Route 93. Do you know how much commerc-, how many square feet of commercial development you're gonna put around that area on the west side of 93?
There are maximum listed, I don't remember the number.
Okay, could you describe the buildings they're gonna be in?
There's a possibility of some office buildings. There's a limit of seven, I think. There's a hospital drawn here presently, and then the rest of these are mixed-use, office, retail, various other uses, residential.
That's you.
I'm curious about those seven commercial buildings right next to 93?
Okay.
Could you describe what's being built there?
I said office.
Right, I know, are they, how big are they?
There's a limitation on the size, both in terms of overall and individually, I think, and I don't remember the numbers.
Where are the limitations coming from? Is that the Town of London Dairy?
No, I, I drafted almost all of this for discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, this is all, it's all changeable, you know, so.
Right. I, I'm just looking for this project to be tax-positive for London Dairy, not tax-negative. And if they, my feeling is-
If I may, from Rick's level-one master plan in that section, it's up to seven office buildings, up to a million square feet.
Anyways, I appreciate all these meetings that you're having, and I also got a, took a lot of information from the charrettes that you had last, last year, last fall. But I'd like to make sure that London Dairy goes into this with their eyes wide open and, and it's a win-win situation for both the developer and the Town of London Dairy.
That'll be our goal.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Ours too.
You're welcome. Anyone else? We're definitely gonna have any more of these anyway, but I think the, the game plan is that we'll go through the submission requirements, and I think for the ninth meeting, we'll dwell on land use density. Get the first, you know, first things first type of thing, you know.
I'd also ask that we spend some time considering format of these meetings and whether or not it makes sense to do them in this format here in this building, or if it makes sense to do it in a more-
Yeah, I tend to like a little more relaxed setting myself. This is-
Can we get a big piece of paper and a table to put it on?
Yeah, if we have a big, big table, we can get everyone around it or something and-
We also need to make sure it's a place where we can have cable access there for-
Yes. That's something maybe we should work on, not necessarily for the ninth meeting, but I like a more, myself, I like a more comfortable situation, so I can even like mingle-
I would suggest that we have the next workshop as part of meeting of the ninth here, but that we consider looking at alternatives from that moving forward.
Yes. How's the board feeling?
Mr. Chairman, one of the things which I'll try to do for us is get some things, blow some things up so that, you know, we can, not in the destruction-
Not literally.
But, but so that, it's usually to be seen. One of the problems we have is that, you know, we can't see some of the stuff, so I will try to get-
It's even worse on here.
Some things on a format that we can, you know, set it somewhere where, where you and something else that the audience can see better, so that we know what we're-
We'll do both. We'll blow up the digital and we'll blow up on paper.
Yep, and then you'll have the availability of Thursday-
Thursday from seven to nine, starting next week, and Thursday, seven to nine, Saturday, nine to eleven, we will have these things available at the orchard. And we will also, you know, to address some of Mary's questions in a way, we have a very large number of pictures and a very large number of information about different projects. And we're in the process of, you know, getting some of that so you can, you know, so you can see better. We don't have, we don't have video, but as I think I've mentioned to the board, my daughter Annie has gone to, I think, as of this week, probably thirty-five of these things and taken, you know, thousands of pictures. And so we have them, we have information about what the place is, you know, what it looks like, and we get some of that stuff in a, in an order and a format that people can go and-
Flip pictures. Instead of video, flip the picture.
You can kinda flip them quickly, make it like a movie or a cartoon.
No, what actually, what she suggested we do is we take some of them and put them on, we, some, if any of you have been at the, we're at the charrette, we have a whole bunch of these whiteboards, and we can place them up so you can say, you know, this is Burke Dale, this is Mashpee, this is something else, give you some idea of what some of these, you know, bases are.
It's not just what they look like, it's also whether or not they have remained viable. You know, the idea was great-
That's another question, we'll get that information, we'll get it for you.
But, you know, did it, did it pan out?
Yeah, I mean, even the last two, three years, the business climate has not been the best, but, you know, I think what Mary says is, is a concern that, you know, if we plan this for twenty years, we want it to be here for twenty years, or thirty years, forty years.
I, I, I think Mike Kettenbach does too. He has a strong interest in the economic viability of the project.
Andre.
Just a quick question, it was mentioned about getting some information on the Ketlands. Are there's a corresponding zoning orders that's, that's based off of, I can get a copy of that as well.
Sure.
All right.
Yes, Lynn.
Question on meeting format, going forward too. You know, our, our first meeting in a month is typically new business, and the meeting's been light for quite a while, at least a few too. Is it possible to do some of the other old business on the first Monday and then just maybe dedicate this meeting to Woodmont?
From a timing standpoint and a deadline standpoint, that could be problematic. If I were to make a recommendation, if we're gonna do this outside, I would probably look at doing it either the third Wednesday or a separate meeting outside of the two regular meetings.
I'm weary of having another meeting. And in these meetings, you know, if we have other old business to go over, these meetings can-
Yeah, there's something that, something that we could slip into the first Wednesday of the month, but we'll, we'll, we'll have to see what we can do anyway.
Well, we're hoping they'll pick up.
I mean, because my other suggestion was going to the third or fourth Wednesday to, to have separate, just Woodmont discussion.
And then just another question I had too, and I don't know where we can go with this, but there's gonna be a lot of questions asked over the next X amount of months.
I mean, cause, I mean, I mean, Jack's got a set of questions, but some of the answers to those are gonna generate other questions, so it's gonna, it's gonna keep on going. We're gonna have a lot of questions.
But how do we keep track of that? And how do we put them out in a format so we remember what the answers are? You know, I don't wanna, I'm sure nobody wants to hear the same question-
Jack will keep emailing, as I come in, as I come in, Jack will send them to us and then maybe Andre can kind of classify it or something, keep track of it.
We've been making sure that we forward them to the applicant, but, but yeah, to keep track of those, the responses.
You know, responses as well as the questions too, and I appreciate what Jack's doing, but I, I think, you know, maybe a more formal method of doing that would be appropriate going forward.
Is it-
Certainly the input coming from, you know, somebody like that, somebody like him, but-
Is it valid to ask the applicant, though, you have your own website, can you post these questions and, and your answers on the website? You know, even if it is, this will be addressed at the meeting to be held, although I wouldn't wanna see that on every single question. But things like the question about the, the golf course and the Christmas tree farm? No.
We have some, some answers. We did some of that, we're trying to figure out the format, so maybe what we do is we go and, you know, frequently ask questions, you know, we have them on our website, and we get some of those and we'll put them up. Because some of the questions that, for example, Jack gets, you know, they're three very similar questions, so we, you know, not your answer, your question, you know, we say, you know, people have been asking about something or other, and we'll just, we'll give an answer. So we'll convert it into that and then-
Well, I would appreciate that, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. We'll, we'll discuss, yeah, anything else from gentlemen?
Don't let it snow anymore in our meetings.
Rich, bring like five panels, big panels here. Yeah, that's gonna be plenty in our room, if you set up two panels here, two panels here, and that will give you a kind of, anybody can walk to it, show it, point it.
Yeah, we had, at the charrette, we had, you know, eight by four panels, and I think we bring some panels here and just set it up here.
We've got one more comment too before we break.
Okay, Lynn's got one more thing.
The presentation you put up that we were looking at, you know, and it had the picture of Pillsbury Road with the jog in it, so I'm looking at the presentation the whole time thinking Pillsbury Road's got the jog in it, you know, and then very young, you know, the question was asked about Pillsbury Road, we find out Pillsbury Road is straight. Maybe just, you know, word to the wise, if we put something out there, you put it in the funnel presentation that you're using to illustrate some points, you know, I would like to see the latest vision of what you have to illustrate those points.
Well, it's, there's actually debate among the design team on that very issue, and so we'd actually like input from the, the town on that. There's reasons for and against it, and it goes back to the idea of whether Pillsbury is primarily a through movement place, or whether it is a place to, you know, basically put an interruption in to, you know, a square.
Right, but not so much debating Pillsbury Road, but just when we're looking at something-
Understood.
That we're looking at what we think we're supposed to be looking at, and not something that's not gonna happen.
One of the problems, just, you know, we'll try to make sure that doesn't happen, but it'd be an awful lot, you change Plan A, you gotta remember, there are all the other layers to-
Oh, sure, for sure, but there's just so much information that we're gonna be processing or, you know, if we have the best, the most accurate information when we're looking at it, we're all gonna benefit from that.
So you wanna focus on, do you wanna start with the easy bits or the more difficult bits? You wanna start with the more-
Start the easy bits first.
Wanted to get the residential, more residential areas-
Just prepare for the difficult ones.
On your valves first?
Practice on the easy stuff.
I need to clarify, you say start with the easy bits first and tough bits, but are we talking phases with regard to timeline?
In terms of land uses within specific areas, I think is what Rick is getting at, not in terms of a phasing. You're not gonna start with the easy bits.
No, no, I'm talking about, you know, this process and this, our discussions, kinda like I did really quickly with those two little residential areas. Do you wanna do all of those? We can probably get through them pretty quickly, or dive right in and try to understand the phase one village area.
Say phase one.
Personally, I wanna see the village.
The timeline.
You know, I think that's what most people have, question done.
Oh, yeah, this-
Okay, let's focus on that and let's understand-
Let's do that.
I agree, they should be starting at the village area and working everywhere.
Okay, okay, we've got, we'll start the village area and then work from there.
And as we go, we'll just work our way through the-
Yep.
But that, to me, that's one of our main, we have to, we have to start.
Right.
So that's a little bit different than what John said, and I'm gonna wrap up really quickly here. He was proposing to go through all the submission list and three sets of three. I think we're, what I heard is maybe we need to focus on the plan and go into the village area and maybe understand it first, talk about it more, you know, understand its density, its ramifications, and once you understand it, then maybe go down through the checklist for that part of the plan.
I find that the most difficult for me to deal with is, is that central area.
Well, but isn't proposed land plan exactly what we're talking about?
Yeah.
And that's a number one that he has checked here.
I understand that, I understand that.
Okay.
We're gonna start in number one, we're gonna start-
In the village.
In the village. In the village.
In the village and work your way out.
You know, so we don't have to talk about the other side of 93, we're not gonna talk about the other residential areas, we're just gonna focus on the village.
No, let's talk about the village first, but I mean, we're not gonna do anything until we know everything, but let's start at the village.
Ultimately, we'll understand, we'll all understand everything together, but let's start with the village.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then starting next week, Thursday, seven to nine, Saturday, nine to, nine to eleven, at the orchard office.
Yep.
Okay, we'll see if we can get that out as much as we can so people can come and go. Okay, we, we get that out as much as we can so people can come and go, uh, you know, and get their questions and so forth out at, at that time.
Maybe we should do agenda item right from there, Thursday, from seven to nine.
Be careful because we have a quorum of the board there that then constitutes a meeting.
Well, this is an informal invitation, isn't it, for everybody in the, you know, the town to go in?
It's like, with a, uh, it's called a chance encounter.
Right.
That all of a sudden you end up there as a, you know, you got a quorum.
Yeah, but a chance encounter at a designated time.
Yes, you're talking about a master plan.
Great timer.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break and we have one, uh, one more item after this. This is Route twenty-eight, Western Segment Impact Fee Methodology. Yes.
They're still having trouble.
Let's read the plan so that he doesn't have to do a huge presentation and you can just vote on it.
I've been to two places, I've been to a place.
Update our impact fees. Uh, so why exactly are we doing this? The corridor study and impact fees were last updated back in two thousand and one. We've obviously had a significant amount of development within and near the corridor since that time. We do have some updated traffic studies prepared for the town by StanTech in recent years. And perhaps most importantly, the cost of the corridor improvements have increased significantly since two thousand and one, but our impact fees are still based on costs from two thousand and one. So the basis of this is we're looking to utilize the basic methodology that was originally developed for us by Southern Hampshire Planning Commission in two thousand and one. Utilize the updated corridor improvement plans based on NHDOT's plans for the I-93 widening, uh, the associated improvements to Exit Five, uh, and the StanTech plans and studies. I'm looking to also simplify our impact fee calculation to a single per PM peak hour trip fee. We're also looking to account for the expected improvement costs in our fees, uh, the increases in our fee structure, utilizing a cost escalator. Uh, we are looking at development areas utilizing the same numbering structure from the original Southern Hampshire Planning Commission report. Graphically, uh, those are those areas that are highlighted in blue outlined in the dashed line. That is the specific studied corridor area. Again, utilizing the same numbering system and area that was originally done for us back in two thousand and one. Uh, we're looking at a base year of two thousand and eleven for our existing traffic. That's from the most recent StanTech study. For our future development area trips, we're looking to utilize uses consistent with the existing zoning out there. Floor area ratio for commercial industrial at fifteen percent of the developable area. Uh, for residential parcels, we're looking at one unit per acre. Uh, with those that might be suitable for workforce housing, getting a twenty-five percent bonus for purposes of determining the trips. And we're utilizing the most up-to-date eighth edition for, uh, trip generation from the Institute of Traffic Engineers. Uh, we're looking at a background growth rate of one percent and the trip distribution per StanTech study. Ultimately, when we look at those, utilizing what we anticipate potential uses for all those parcels are, we end up with a total of approximately four thousand new development area-generated trips, assuming all of those development areas were to be built out. Uh, how that's comprised in our Horizon year of two thousand and twenty-one, uh, the two thousand and eleven existing volumes would make up about forty-five percent of the traffic into two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, background growth would account for about sixteen percent. And then the development areas would themselves contribute about thirty-nine percent of the traffic that would be on Route twenty-eight in that section during the year two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, our cost sharing, uh, the corridor cost improvements have gone up significantly, almost doubling from about ten million to nineteen point nine million in two thousand and ten dollars. Uh, the cost breakdown would be DOT and London area share at sixty-one percent, again, based on the breakdown of the existing traffic. And then those development areas would be responsible for thirty-nine million or approximately seven point seven six million dollars of the construction cost. In calculating the impact fee, I've also included an average of twenty trips per year from outside the corridor, which is a rough average of, of what we've been seeing for development that's not specifically within the studied area but still has impacts through Route twenty-eight. And we're also recommending, uh, something new, which would be a three and a half percent cost on fee escalation for every year beyond two thousand and eleven for the impact.
Go back one slide.
Sure.
Back to the pie chart?
Yep.
Okay, so the development, we're looking, development lines, thirty-nine percent, so they're basically paying their own way.
Where basically, what we're saying is the cost of the improvements moving forward, development would be responsible for thirty-nine percent of those costs because that's specifically what their impact would be on the corridor at that time.
Right, so they pay their own way, the, the, the background, just the, the other growth.
So what I'm saying is that out of the nineteen point nine million dollars of improvements we have out there, the town and state are responsible for that sixty-one percent, which is the forty-five percent of existing volumes and the background growth, and then development is responsible for the remaining three. Uh, broken down even more specifically, uh, StanTech has broken this down into major intersections and segments. Uh, we've also had the cost estimate escalated out to the year two thousand and fifteen, utilizing a three and a half percent escalation factor for each year, which has generally been approximately what construction costs have been escalating over the course of the last several years. What that does is our current impact fee, where we don't have a specific matrix associated with it, it's nine hundred and twelve dollars per new PM peak hour trip. Uh, it would be proposed to be increased in one thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars for two thousand and eleven and then continuing to escalate, uh, over the course of the next several years, up to twenty-three thirteen and, uh, year two thousand and sixteen. Again, trying to make sure that we don't fall behind again where we're now ten years beyond the original corridor study and our fees are no longer covering what the anticipated costs would be. Uh, what this really means, looking at two thousand and one versus two thousand and eleven, that fee is up about a hundred and nineteen percent. Again, primarily due to the overall cost increase, uh, from ten, ten point eight to nineteen point nine million. Uh, the cost share has also changed. Back in two thousand and one, uh, development volumes were anticipated to be half of the existing, uh, trips that would be on the corridor. Uh, now that we've had development within the corridor, that number has obviously gone down. So the share has gone down to thirty-nine percent in this most recent update. And again, just showing it broken down in terms of, uh, again, two thousand and one versus two thousand and eleven, uh, the town share and the state share were about five and a half million dollars back then. And now it's, uh, twelve point one and seven point seven is the split. I've really gone over this very quickly. I have the full, uh, report in your packets. Again, what I really tried to do was try to simplify, uh, the existing, uh, impact fee, the way it's, uh, implemented. Uh, Southern Hampshire Planning Commission has a relatively complex matrix that depending on specifically where you are in the corridor, your fee is going to vary greatly depending on where you're located. Uh, in order to help, uh, developers and the town anticipate before they start development what their costs are going to be, uh, it made sense, uh, from our standpoint to try to simplify that to a single PM, uh, peak hour trip fee, uh, which we hope that has accomplished, uh, making these changes.
It, it's kind of a big, uh, big jump there. I guess we've been...
It's a big jump because again, we're, we're ten years later and costs have essentially doubled.
And so it's dependable?
I feel it's entirely dependable, yes. Again, the basic methodology is the same, uh, as we used in two thousand and one. It's just utilizing our updated information to, uh, make this change.
The cost is based on, uh, studies that we have done on Route twenty-eight. Uh, the StanTech, StanTech has done for us for the Jaxford Road area as well as the, uh, airport area. And, um, the cost, you know.
As well as the state's improvements for the lane, for the bridge, the exit, uh, the lanes under the bridge at Exit Five.
Recent cost construction costs, you know, used for the...
It says in the developer...
That the, uh, cost jumps significantly. I mean, that's something that, you know, we noticed, but...
But that's sort of development state of shock or something, or, I mean, we don't want to lose something.
But if you escalate, uh, up nine seventeen from two thousand and one dollars using a three percent escalator, I think you're, you're looking right at the wall.
We would be right about where we are now.
Right where we are now.
Have you looked at other towns to see what they charge?
Yeah.
It varies depending entirely. It, it's not something you can compare apples to apples because every corridor is different and the amount of improvements that are needed in individual corridors are different. So you really can't compare one town's costs versus another's because we have twenty million dollars worth of improvements here. They may only have six million dollars of improvement, so their fee is going to be based on that.
Okay.
Now, we looked at the Freezer Warehouse project tonight. Are there any impact fees that they're going to be paying?
They are not likely to have any impact fees, but because they've submitted for design review before this was posted for hearing, they would be, uh, permitted to go under the two thousand and one study at this point.
Okay, so that answers my other question. Do we have any other projects up there that have been approved that have...
Not, not that I come to mind. Uh, the, the one that is probably going to be most likely hit by this would be the development at, uh, Exit Five, uh, the Vista Ridge, uh, retail developments and the potential McDonald's. Those would be projects that would be subject to the new fee if we post this, which I...
Are they still coming forward with the McDonald's?
Yes, they are. They will be here, uh, in two weeks and they actually have made significant progress on that.
Okay.
Quick, in and out on the road.
Is it by the same owner that has this one on one oh two, do you know?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Because I'd like to talk to him. So, um, does, if, Mr. Chair, did you entertain a motion to, we, do we pass this on to the...
No, we need to have a public hearing on this.
Oh, all right, so...
Originally, had we not had a snow day two weeks ago, this would be on the meeting agenda for February ninth for a public hearing, but the deadline has already passed for me to post that. What I plan on doing is if the board is supportive and wants to move to a public hearing, there's a minor change that will have to be made to the zoning ordinance to reference this new study. Uh, and then what I would ask the board to do in March is adopt the study and, uh, recommend the, the minor zoning change to reference that study to the council.
We can't have a public hearing the second meeting in a month?
I've already missed the deadline for legal notice at this point.
Even the second meeting?
Yes, that was last week.
Yeah, because it's, it's two weeks from tonight.
I know, I kind of glide because I really want you to take a look at it because it is, it is a...
But I already looked at it during agenda item.
Again, uh...
And I, I, I will say this is, this is one of those projects that's kind of been slowly in the works for several months. Uh, in the past, we've obviously utilized Southern Hampshire Planning Commission to do these types of things for us. But given the, uh, the nature of our budget lines in terms of what we've had available for consultant studies, this is something that we decided couldn't wait any longer, so we did it in-house, which, given everything else that we're doing in the office, is the reason why it took a little longer to put this together than it would have been had we gone to consultant route.
So based on McDonald's going out there, do you have any feel for what the fees would have been and what they will be under this structure?
Without a traffic study, it's hard for me to tell.
I don't know how many trips a fast food restaurant generates.
Just using a round, using a round number, ten, ten trips, you're looking at nineteen thousand dollars versus, uh, nine thousand dollars, so...
Yeah, I mean, but if they're doing a thousand trips, a thousand trips is a different...
We're only, we're, we don't look at daily trips. We only look at new PM peak hour trips. So when a traffic study is done, they're going to tell us during the PM peak hour, for example, there's fifty trips that are going to go in and out of McDonald's.
Per hour?
During that four to six PM timeframe.
Total timeframe.
But during, but because of the nature of McDonald's, those aren't necessarily new trips to the corridor because McDonald's is one of those businesses that gets a lot of... because McDonald's is one of those businesses that gets a lot of pass-by trips that are trips that are already on the corridor that they see in McDonald's and they're going to stop there. So that's another component that's taken into effect. If I go back, actually, I can show you how this works.
Destination, destination trip is just drive-by.
Right.
The drive-by don't count because it's already.
If you look at this.
So how do you calculate that number?
If you look at this, just look at this table.
No, no, you know, they can come and say, we have motor trips, everybody driving by.
I mean, there are, there are industry averages that they, you know, like.
Particular land uses have a particular pass-by percentage. Just, just to show you, for example, if we look at this one right here, which happens to be the retail development at Exit Five, if they do sixty thousand square feet of shopping, six thousand square foot restaurant, and two hundred and five thousand square feet of Big Box, the total PM peak trips is going to be fourteen hundred and sixty-four. But if you actually take into account the pass-by percentages, the actual number of new trips that aren't already on Route twenty-eight is only eleven hundred.
Well, say eleven hundred trips then, we're going from.
That's going to be. But again, the other thing you have to remember is for a development like that, if they're going to end up having off-site improvements, they have the ability to credit their impact fees for whatever off-site improvements they perform. So if their impact fee is a hundred thousand dollars and they do two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of improvements consistent with the plan, they would not pay in a traffic impact fee.
They'll credit their impact fees. And also too, it also takes some, like, and I use Harvey Industry as an example.
Well, John must be here.
When they came in and. You know, what, what, what they got was a high PM peak hour trip because that's when their shift let up.
Sure.
What they did, what they did is just reexamine the way they do business and said, you know what, then we'll release our, our shifts at this time and this time to avoid the peak hour hit.
Three thirty.
And I said, great, that helps us out because it lowers the trip and it helps them out because it lowers their impact fee.
That's typically the situation with Freezer Warehouse. Their trips are usually before PM peak hour hits, so they don't have a major traffic impact in terms of their particular facility.
I was up on Jaxford Bridge Road last week at three thirty and I was just car after car after car after car.
All of that time. You were to avoid.
But again, these numbers are based on, you know, hypothetical situations. These are all going to be refined when a specific user comes in and does a traffic study, we'll know specifically.
You know, I mean, I don't doubt what Andrew's saying. In fact, I think that the math obviously works. My biggest concern is we're catching up in ten years in one shot. I mean, that's a huge, huge percentage.
But do you think.
I'll be interested to see what the public has to say.
And also, wouldn't you expect though that a businessman would, a business would expect to pay these, that level of fees? I mean, they haven't come in before to say, last week I would have paid nine hundred and this week I'm paying nineteen hundred.
Expect to pay because this point's at, everything else is different.
Right.
But if I started a planning process a year ago for what building a business in London Dairy and I'm looking at the current fees thinking it's nine hundred, I'd go and put my paperwork in and it's nineteen hundred.
It's not necessarily nine hundred, though. It's, it's, that's, that's the problem I have with the.
I understand that. I'm using the same numbers you're using, so.
Let me continue your line of thought. You know, so that's a difference. I just, it just seems like it's sticker shock, frankly. Mary, I have no idea whether, I don't know what they'd expect to pay. Based on, based on looking at it right now, I think they'd expect to pay nine hundred bucks.
Candidly, George, they expect to pay as little as possible.
Well, and that makes sense. And who are you again? Oh, John, how are you?
My nameplate's right there. You know, until, until March, March thirteenth, I'm still a member of this board. Or whatever it is, whenever town meeting is. But, yeah, you know, they, they expect to pay nothing is what they expect. So I'll tell you guys something, something I found in California while I was there after you're done with this conversation was really interesting.
Okay. So we, we ready to go for a public hearing on it and find out what the public wants?
Yeah. So developers who have a concern about this should come to the public hearing.
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, on that note, I was in California at a bio, a biom manufacturing conference. So this is for doing biologics, which is the next phase in pharmaceuticals and, and medical. So I'm at this conference and there's all these companies there and everything. And it was also one person with a booth. The eastern region of North Carolina, they're recruiting companies to move to their region.
Eastern region, so that's a coastal area.
I sat in on their session. I mean, their laws are very different from ours. But, and they are, they are selling the farm. You know, it was really, it was actually, I brought some brochures back from it that I'll give to you guys and everything. It was really quite interesting. But they're going to these, they're not going to the show about community development. They're going straight to the companies and going to the shows where they go to learn about their own business. And then they're setting up booths and telling them about.
Love to have the budget for that.
Why they should, why they should move. Well, you know, I mean, I could influence that, right? And Dave and I have discussed this already. But, you know, very, very interesting, and they're coming at it in a much different way than we go about it.
But that's a consortium of communities that is represented by that one entity, correct?
Yeah, well, like the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission.
Yeah. And that's, in talking with some of the cities and towns that do do trade shows such as that, such as that, that's where they're up against. You say you got, I say, you know, Manchester going up against East Carolina Block or Alabama, the state of Alabama, or Texas, Louisiana, whatever, all working together to say, we want you.
All right, so like Lonza Biologics, who's in Portsmouth? You know, is, you know, is growing by leaps and bounds. And actually, it's funny, Lonz is one of my customers. They do all of their global planning for all of their plants in the world out of Portsmouth, New Hampshire.
No kidding?
Everything they manufacture is planned out of Portsmouth, New Hampshire. So it's not like the talent doesn't exist. And they pay, you know, a third of the price they would pay anyplace else in the world. So we are attracted to people.
That was New Hampshire's first, first deal of a substantial tax cut. The first and only one. They haven't done anything since.
So I'm sorry, I got the last plane into Logan. I'm sorry to interrupt your meeting, but I thought that was kind of exciting because I talked to, I talked to the guy for like an hour. It was like, you know, it was pretty interesting.
So maybe you should speak to Governor Lynch as well.
Well, well, interestingly, you know, I talked to Dave for a while about it. I called him right after the conversation. And interestingly, I went to the engineering battalion's go-away a couple of weeks ago. And Governor Lynch and I got some time alone since I was the dignitary from London Dairy, talking about Pettingill Road, talking about development. And Governor Lynch was very interested. You know, he, he, he really believes Pettingill Road will get built. So it was.
I worked fifteen years on that elevator, you know.
So, I mean, but, and it was funny, he approached me, I didn't approach him. So it was, it was sort of.